Okay, I've been signaled it's four o'clock and I will call the October 5th Salina City Commission regular meeting to order. I would ask staff for confirmation that the Kansas Open Meeting Act required notice has been properly provided.
Yes.
Thank you. With that, we will have roll call.
Mayor Hoppick.
Here.
Commissioner Davis, Commissioner Franz.
Here.
Commissioner Hodges.
Here.
Commissioner Ryan.
Here.
Thank you. Will those that are able please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance and a moment of silence?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Thank you. Okay, we will have awards and proclamations first.
Item 3.1, the week of October 4th through 10th, 2020 is Fire Prevention Week in the city of Salina. Troy Long, Fire Marshal, will read the proclamation.
Good afternoon, Mayor Hoppick, Commissioners. Whereas the city of Salina is committed to ensuring the safety and security of all those living in and visiting Salina, and whereas a serious public safety concern both locally and nationally, and homes are the location where people are at the greatest risk from fire, and whereas home fires killed more than 2,630 people in the United States in 2017 according to the National Fire Protection Association, and fire departments in the United States responded to 357,000 home fires, and whereas cooking is the leading cause of home fires in the United States, where fire departments responded to more than 173,200 annually between 2013 and 17, whereas two of every five home fires start in the kitchen, with 31% of these fires resulting from unattended cooking, and where more than half of reported non-fatal home cooking fire injuries occurred when the victims tried to fight the fire themselves, whereas children under five face a higher risk of non-fire burns associated with cooking than being burned in a cooking fire, whereas Salina's residents should stay in the kitchen when frying food on the stove top, keep a three-foot kid-free zone around cooking areas, and keep anything that can catch on fire away from the stove top, and whereas residents who have planned and practiced a home fire escape plan are more prepared and will therefore be more likely to survive a fire, and whereas working smoke alarms cut the risk of dying in reported home fires in half, whereas Salina's first responders are dedicated to reducing the occurrence of home fires and home fire injuries through prevention and protection education, and whereas Salina's residents are responsive to public education measures and are able to take personal steps to increase their safety from fire, especially in their homes, whereas the 2020 Fire Prevention Week theme "Serve Up Fire Safety in the Kitchen" effectively serves to remind us to stay alert and use caution when cooking to reduce the risk of kitchen fires. Therefore, I, Michael L. Hoppick, Mayor of Salina, do hereby proclaim October 4th through the 10th, 2020, as Fire Prevention Week throughout Kansas, and I urge all the people of Salina to check their kitchens for fire hazards and to use safe cooking practices during Fire Prevention Week 2020, and to support the many public safety activities and efforts of Salina's Fire and Emergency Services.
Thank you. Are there any events or anything planned during Fire Prevention Week?
Yeah, so throughout October, we'll be doing some firefighter in the classroom throughout some of the elementary schools where we can be outside and do that kind of stuff. We'll also be doing some social media posts, and then as far as tours and things like that have kind of been suspended since COVID, so.
Okay, thank you very much. I have a proclamation here for you. Thank you for coming.
Item 3.2, the week of October 18th through 24th, 2020, as Friends of the Library Week in the city of Salina. Greta Kontas, Friends of the Salina Public Library Vice President, will read the proclamation.
Whereas Friends of the Salina Public Library raise money that enables our library to move from good to great, providing the resources for additional programming, much-needed equipment, support for children and adult summer reading, scholarships for teen volunteers, and special events throughout the year, whereas the work of the Friends highlights the fact that our library is the cornerstone of the community, providing opportunities for all to engage in the joy of lifelong learning and connect with the thoughts and ideas of others from ages past to the present, whereas the Friends understand the critical importance of well-funded libraries and advocates to ensure that our library gets the resources it needs to provide a wide variety of services to all ages, including access to print and electronic materials along with expert assistance in research, readers' advisory, and children's services, whereas the Friends' gift of their time and commitment to the library sets an example for all in how volunteerism leads to positive civic engagement and betterment of our community. Now therefore be it resolved that Michael L. Hoppick, Mayor, proclaims October 18th through the 24th, 2020, as Friends of the Library Week in Salina, Kansas, and urges everyone to consider joining the Friends of the Library and thank them for all they do to make our library and community so much better. In witness thereof, I have here unto set my hand and cause the seal of the city of Salina, Kansas, to be affixed this fifth day of October, 2020.
Thank you. Do the Friends have anything planned during the month?
Yes, we do. We had to come up with some ingenious ways, or what we think are ingenious ways, to try to have our used book sales, which is our main fundraising activity, and obviously we can't have 100 people down in the press room next to each other fighting over who's getting which book. So what we've done, and we tried a little trial run of it a couple of weeks back, in front of the library, all up and down the sidewalks, we have tables out there, and we've put the books in bags, they're stapled clothes, we have the social distancing, everybody wears masks, you can even drive up and request what type of genre of books that you would like. Now, what we're doing for the end of this week is we're calling it Mass Media Mania, and so we will have bags, paper bags, and I should say a thank you to Brahms Corporate down in Oklahoma for supplying the bags for us. You can get CDs, a bag of CDs, music CDs, and we've got little hints on them. It's not all a surprise because we've got hints, whether it's instrumental or country, because if you like rap, you probably don't like the country, but so we've got hints on them. Some of the books on tape are not only by theme but by author, so if you have a particular author that you like, so there are hints of what's in there, and then we have movies. So people who have to still stay inside, you can listen to the books or you can see the movies, right? And that will be at the end of this week, that Saturday and Sunday. If it's really bad weather, we'll move inside and try to figure out tables at different places so we can socially distance, but everyone will have their mask and we have big surprises. We also have a membership drive that week for those of you who aren't members. Mm-hmm, I could sign you up, okay? Yep. We do good work, we're kind of the booster club for the library, and I hope when you come in you will see the changes that the staff has done, you know, while they were closed down, the library, they've added some new technological features. I was downstairs in the kids' section the other day and they've got for the kids to check out, it looks like a robot, the automatic check-in and check-out, and I'm thinking, I wonder how this works, and some little five-year-old come up and checked out her book right then. I go, oh, okay, that's how it works. But we thank you.
Are all the Friends as enthusiastic as you are? It sounds like we're lucky to have you.
Well, thank you, thank you. You know, for some of us, these things are passion, for many of us, reading was a passion. You know, there are 33,000 people with library cards in this area, and so we can't do enough to keep increasing, and we are so lucky to have the leadership that we do at the library. Most of you know Melanie, and you know Melanie's background was tech, so when all of this came in and people couldn't get to the library, you know what they did? Right away, put the classes online. You know, I mean, so we're very lucky.
Yeah, we are very fortunate. We have one, I would put our library up against any library for a community our size.
Not even in the state, but in the whole area.
And I think we, there she goes again. She is. So, but yeah, we were fortunate, I know during COVID and stuff, that our library did everything they could to still reach out to as many people as possible, so we thank you and the other Friends and the staff for all the hard work they do, so.
And if you haven't signed up, remember, you don't have to wait till that week to sign up to become a member of the Friends.
I'm surprised you didn't bring signup sheets with you. Okay.
Item 3.3, the month of October, 2020, as United Way Month in the city of Salina. Claire Mullen, Salina Area United Way Executive Director, will read the proclamation.
Whereas the citizens of the Tin County Service Area of the Salina Area United Way receive great benefits from the many programs provided by its health and human service agencies, and whereas Salina Area United Way brings together businesses, government agencies, community organizations, and committed individuals in a united effort to fund health and human service agencies, and whereas Salina Area United Way for over 80 years has made available this financial support from its annual campaign, and whereas United Way's work is made possible through the generosity of individuals and businesses, the public and private sector, and whereas Salina Area United Way partners with people and organizations of all backgrounds to make a collective impact, and whereas United Way funds raised by the Salina Area United Way supports organizations, programs, and projects for the benefit of its citizens and the improvement of their quality of life, and whereas Salina Area United Way fights for the health, education, and financial stability of all people in every community. Now therefore I, Michael L. Hoppick, Mayor, do hereby proclaim the month of October, 2020, as United Way Month, and encourage all citizens to support financially through United Way the many local community organizations that provide invaluable services for our seniors, individuals, and families, and youth in the Salina Area United Way Service Area in north central Kansas.
Thank you, Claire, and can you give us some of the events you have going on during the month of October?
Sure, so we just kicked off our annual campaign a week and a half ago, and so all month of October, all of our workplace campaigns are getting started, so all the different businesses and organizations that participate in that are working to get all of their employees signed up and doing different events, so we'll be out and about at all the different businesses as much as we can, sharing and talking about everything that we've been doing in this past year, so, which is a lot.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
I have a proclamation for you. It's church time. Okay, that leads us to Citizens Forum. This is an opportunity for anyone to come forward if they would like to talk about something that is not on the agenda. We ask that you keep your comments to five minutes, and please give your name and where you're from.
Hello, Joan Ratslough, I'm from Salina, and I've got a little bit to read to you today about Judy Larson, in her memory and in her honor. Judy Larson passed away on September 20th at the age of 71. She was born in Lindesburg, attended Rutgers University, and she was an active citizen in our local government for many years. It seemed fitting to the Saline County citizens for responsible government that we mark her passing by sharing some comments from her friends and acquaintances in city and county commission public forums, because she's not here, and we kind of wish she were. So, just a few people sent some comments, and I'm going to read them for you. "I knew her from her involvement during the Drive for Five campaign. She was a spunky one, not at all afraid to stand up to the bullies. I admired that about her. And after her car wreck, she had such a tough recovery, but she got her behind out there and walked and worked hard to bounce back. I should be half as tough as that lady was." Judy was quick-witted and would not stand for others being mistreated. For example, she once said during the contentious Health Department issue, "My cat, Greta, would make a better commissioner than you," not to be mean, but because she really wanted the commission to be better. Judy was smart and funny and always encouraged us to do better. Her presence had been missed and will be missed in the future, a real loss of a good-hearted person. I used to be her caregiver. She was a joy and often had a sweet and kind of ornery look about her. She enjoyed staying busy at the nurses' station filing paperwork. She was also good about looking after her roommate to make sure she was well taken care of, and will miss her. Judy Larson's sharp humor imprinted on me the day I met her. She was eccentric, fiercely passionate, intelligent, and kind. Every conversation I had with her was a mixture of smiles and laughter coupled with politics and the never-ending need for community innovation. Most of us knew how much she loved cats, but she also loved baseball and she adored Elvis Presley. She was lucky enough to meet Elvis, and I never got tired of hearing the story. I wish I could hear her tell it just once more. Judy was unconventional, colorful, and unique, and was sometimes harshly judged by the people around her, but those are the qualities I loved most about her. She responded to those people with a joke and a smile, and I knew she was stronger than we all realized. In a world that is becoming more and more divisive, people like Judy are becoming more valuable than ever. My interactions with her changed who I am and how I see people. Although the world seems a little less colorful without her in it, we are all a little brighter on the inside from having met her." And lastly, in Judy's honor, we ask everyone to vote. Early in-office voting starts October 19th. So thank you for allowing me the time.
Thank you. Yeah, we, I did not realize that Judy had been ill and she was not at our meetings for quite a while, so we, whether you agreed with Judy or not, she was always entertaining, and she will be missed, so thank you for sharing that. Okay, anyone else have any items for Citizens Forum? Okay, if not, we will move into the consent agenda.
Item 6.1, approve the minutes of September 28th, 2020. Item 6.2, approve Resolution Number 20-7884, appointing John Olson as a member of the Board of Zoning Appeals and Daniel Baffa as a member of the Heritage Commission. And Item 6.3, approve Resolution Number 20-7883, setting November 23rd, 2020 as the public hearing date for the dangerous structure located at 120 South Penn Avenue.
Okay, do we have any items that a Commissioner would like to remove from the consent agenda? Okay, if not, I will bring it back for a motion.
Mayor Hoppick, I move that we pass the consent agenda as presented.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve consent agenda items 6.1, 6.2, and 6.3. All those in favor?
Aye.
I opposed. That passes 4-0. That will lead us to 7.1.
Item 7.1, second reading, ordinance number 20-11043, authorizing and providing for a countywide public safety communication system, and authorizing the issuance of temporary notes and/or general obligation bonds of the city in an amount of $3 million to pay the cost thereof.
Okay, this is a second reading, and I do not believe we've had any public comment. Are there any questions for staff from the Commission? Any comments from the public? If not, I will bring it back to the Commission for Action.
Mayor Hoppick, I move that we approve on second reading, ordinance number 20-11043.
Okay.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve ordinance number 20-11043. We will have a roll call.
Commissioner Franz.
Aye.
Commissioner Hodges.
Aye.
Commissioner Ryan.
Aye.
Mayor Hoppick.
Aye. That also passes 4-0. That will lead us to 7.2.
Item 7.2, second reading, ordinance number 20-11039, amending Chapter 25, Article 1 of the City of Salina Code by adopting the 2020 Uniform Public Offense Code for Kansas Cities, published by the League of Kansas Municipalities, repealing existing Section 25-1 as amended.
Again, this is second reading, I do not believe we've received any comments from the public, any questions?
There is one thing that I would like to note. The effective date of this is set for October 15th. That allows for implementation by the Police Department to get it produced, disseminated to the officers, and get it implemented.
Okay, any comments from the public? I'll bring it back to the Commission for Action.
Mayor Hoppick, I would move that we approve ordinance number 20-11039 on second reading.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve ordinance number 20-11039 on second reading. We will have a roll call.
Commissioner Franz.
Aye.
Commissioner Hodges.
Aye.
Commissioner Ryan.
Aye.
Mayor Hoppick.
Aye. That passes 4-0. That will bring us to 7.3.
Item 7.3, second reading, ordinance number 20-11040, amending Chapter 38, Article 1 of the City of Salina Code by adopting the 2020 Standard Traffic Ordinance for Kansas Cities, published by the League of Kansas Municipalities as amended.
Okay, again, this is a second reading. I'm not aware of any public comment, any comments from?
Similar to the last item, this has an effective date of October 15th to allow for dissemination and implementation with the Police Department.
Any comment from public? If not, I will bring it back to the Commission.
Mayor Hoppick, I move that we approve ordinance number 20-11040 on second reading.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve ordinance number 20-11040 on second reading. We will have a roll call.
Commissioner Franz.
Aye.
Commissioner Hodges.
Aye.
Commissioner Ryan.
Aye.
Mayor Hoppick.
Aye. That also passes 4-0. I think that's the last of the second readings, so we will move on to item 7.4.
Item 7.4, Resolution Number 20-7885, authorizing the city manager to provide additional leave to recognize essential employees working through the stay-at-home order and not on shared work plan or furlough.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Commissioners. Staff has brought back a proposal, as requested by the City Commission, to attempt to encompass some of the elements that were discussed, to recognize the essential employees that both worked through that stay-at-home period as well as were not on a shared work plan or furloughed, and the rationale behind both of those items being connected, there was no financial benefit given by the Federal Pandemic Unemployment Compensation Act. There was time off for the individuals in addition to some financial compensation for those that received that, so again, individuals not on shared work or furloughed would not have received any financial benefit or the time off, and then backing up again that they were required as essential employees to work during that period of time. We had some conversations with both executive staff and employee council to talk about proposal, the elements that were in it, based on feedback input. We tried to tweak that and then bring it back to you for consideration. Among some concerns was scheduling, obviously, is a big one, especially for the functions that are 24/7 operations, worried about how they're going to fit in additional leave, and then possible overtime expenses that weren't budgeted. But with that being included in the thought process behind the proposal, I will briefly hit the high points of the leave guidelines for your consideration. Again, in order to be eligible, that two-pronged approach of working during the stay-at-home period as well as not being included on the shared work or furlough, we included a 66% threshold, and the rationale there was making sure we weren't leaving out someone that may have had to take a couple of days off to be at home with a child following spring break, when the spring break, that started in the middle of March and ended in September, basically, to make sure that those individuals wouldn't be excluded from consideration, even though maybe they meant everything else. The other element there was we did have a cluster of employees that while they were not being asked to report to their work station every day, the expectation was that they would be called in at any given time, so they were still considered essential, just not reporting eight hours a day, five days a week, but they may have been working anywhere from 40-some to a full pay period, which would be 80 in that circumstance, throughout the stay-at-home, if that makes sense. So we wanted to make sure that we weren't penalizing those individuals, which is why that 2/3 or 66% of the work time from the period of March 16th to May 10. As far as quantity, the number of hours we are proposing is one week, so shift firefighters, the average would be 56, we may have some 56 hours per week, the part-time individuals may be looking at 20 hours a week or less, depending on what their normal schedule would be. A leave bank, we are prepared to set aside it completely separately from any of the other leave banks with a special set of rules, so at any given time, it would be accounted for separately whether the hours would be used or bought back, which leads me to the second area below that. As far as leave usage, proposing that it could be actual time granted or that individuals could sell it back. Part of the consideration on proposing that it would be sold back, and we did opt for hour-for-hour based on some feedback from employee councils, if you're really looking to recognize the individuals, then, you know, why would we be considering reducing it down if by chance they couldn't actually take the time off physically due to scheduling or whatnot? We are proposing that they would be able to choose to sell it back at any given point between now and the end of September of 2021, giving the individuals about an hour. We had some conversations about if we'd just make it through the end of next year, but we are trying to keep that away from all of the other year-end and other vacation requirements that might be of consideration to the employee and/or the department, depending on scheduling or other things going on, so that's why we just looked at giving it a year. One of the main concerns initially when this was being discussed, especially for supervisors and members of employee council, was that we were going to make sure they had to have it this year, because they knew schedules wouldn't allow it and a lot of people would be out of luck, so that is why we were looking into next year. And just to point out, we are looking as far as not providing it retroactively, if someone would have left last month, that we would go back and have to pay them, but just to clarify, this would be in the event you would authorize us to move forward with this, that it would be from whatever time we enact it, that someone would have to be employed at that point, and then all of the other guidelines that are relevant would After we came up with those qualifiers, I did try to take a look at which employees would be potentially impacted here, worked with the departments, gave them lists, had them see if I was missing anyone, a little back and forth, and the numbers by department are listed, again, these are estimated, we would go back through in the event that you would say, please enact this. Total employees, we're looking this. Total employees, we're looking at about one hundred and eighty-seven employees that would have fallen into those categories. The value, as of right now, and I say as of right now, because if an employee would be looking to sell this back in two thousand and twenty-one, the cost of living would apply. But the value that I have estimated these leave hours and this additional bank would be just under, or just over one hundred and ninety-eight thousand dollars, one hundred and ninety-eight, one seventy-four. I tried to come up with a system or a formula to say, what would the cost of overtime be? And I just couldn't come up, obviously, some of the areas would have twenty-four-seven operations where someone's taken off shift, someone has to fill it, but it's not that way across the board with all of these employees. So that is why I did not create a formula to come up with what that cost representation would be for the full impact and the additional overtime and the staffing. I just chose to take the value of the leave for the individuals as of right now. With that, I'll be happy to answer any questions, but as far as commission action that's being requested, we've identified the following options. Approving Resolution twenty seven eight eight five, authorizing the city to provide additional COVID-related leave as outlined in the proposal, approving it with specified changes or declining it altogether. And again, happy to take any questions or entertain any comments and suggestions.
Any comments and questions?
I presume that the employees who meet that sixty-six percent threshold did not receive any of the federal unemployment supplementation. In other words, if they worked seventy percent for whatever reasons you cited, they would not have received the federal supplement. They were on, weren't considered to be unemployed to that extent.
Correct. So I kind of worked at this backwards, so I can't tell you that there weren't any individuals that worked sixty-six percent that weren't then placed on shared work. I started, because we had such a large number of individuals on shared work, and then we added the furloughed individuals. I started with that list of those that weren't, and then worked backwards from there.
Okay.
But when I looked at that, those numbers then, I was purely only looking at those that would not be eligible for the pandemic.
Because the intent behind this, I think, was to recognize those employees who didn't get that windfall, for lack of a better word. And, you know, I guess we have to recognize that somebody might slip through the cracks, and they may have received the windfall and also get this benefit, but that's not the intent, and I would presume we'll kind of watch for that.
Right. So the individuals that I've identified here, they would have, first of all, not been on the shared work or shared work, and as far as I can tell, they would have worked at least two-thirds of the time.
And it's fully at the employee option, if they can take it as leave or as a buyback?
Yes. And I did clarify, just hypothetically, if this were to be approved today, and HR would work to implement it, to make sure we didn't have the expectation that they could call the department tomorrow and not report to work, that it would be subject to whatever the scheduling protocols or the approval for the time off at the department level.
Okay. But I guess, do you have any feel at all for how many employees might be asking for a buyback as opposed to leave time, because that would affect your overtime calculation?
Right.
Quite a bit, I would presume, in some cases.
Yeah, I would, I would think probably over half, but I just don't know, without really surveying those that are under consideration.
That's actually pretty high. I'm a little surprised at that, but it doesn't, you know, it's their benefit to use however they see fit. So, okay, thanks.
Any other questions? Any comments from the public? Okay, if not, I will bring it back to the commission for action.
Mayor Hoppick, I move that we approve Resolution number twenty dash seven eight eight five, authorizing the city to provide additional COVID-related leave as outlined in the proposal.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve Resolution number two zero dash seven eight eight five. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? That passes four zero. Thank you, Ms. Fisher. Okay, I guess you get to stay up there.
Item seven point five, Resolution number two zero dash seven eight eight six, adopting an amended position description and salary schedule for city employees and repealing Resolution number nineteen dash seven seven two six.
Okay, thank you again. The item before you is really intended to allow our organization to get a jump start on hiring at a lot of increased starting pay levels for various positions. During the budget process, you approved our two thousand and twenty-one pay plan with changes, along with the cost of living adjustment. What staff is requesting is to basically take those changes that were implemented with the two thousand and twenty-one pay plan, and for just the areas that are changing pay grades as proposed, to just start it now. As noted in the report, we have struggled to hire several of these positions. Our market, the private market, is, from what we can tell, quite a bit higher than our starting rate. We've struggled with vacancies, and we are getting into the season where unfortunately, snow could start falling, and we are very concerned on having the individuals not only onboard but trained and ready to go. So the hope is that maybe with some higher starting pays, we can entice some individuals that hadn't considered the positions previously. If you take a look at all the positions that are being requested to change, the best way that I can describe it when we start moving different individuals or different position classifications from one pay grade to another is it starts the domino effect. We have to take a look at not only the positions, and for example, if you have a street maintenance worker one, you also have a street maintenance worker two. Not only do you have to apply a change to all of those in that family, but also then take a look at the divisions within the same department that may have similar qualifications, as well as then going back and comparing to, if you're moving this core of individuals or the positions, then to also try to appropriately space them and place them, to look at both internal, within the division, the department, and the city equity across all of those areas. So that is why, even though we've really focused on maybe one or two areas, that is why we have ended up with so many other changes and, or proposed changes to that pay plan. And just for clarification, when we make the changes to the pay plan, that doesn't mean that every individual in those roles is going to receive a pay increase. We first of all have to make sure that individuals will be making the minimum in the pay grade. And typically, it's going to be the individuals that are newer in those roles that won't be, if they've started in one pay grade, and then we move it to pay grades up, they're not going to be anywhere close to that starting pay typically. And then we also take a look for compression to make sure that we're not leapfrogging over individuals that have given years of service in a particular role. I looked at how much I thought this might impact, and just to give you an idea, about twenty-four employees are proposed to get an adjustment, but those range from around twelve cents up to a dollar seventy-seven on the high end. When I took a look at the wages by division, and then I looked at general fund versus not, projecting fourth quarter two thousand and twenty with the proposed or the requested changes, we were anticipating fourteen thousand seven hundred and forty dollars of an impact to the general fund, and thirty-five eighty-five to sanitation and solid waste. Again, it doesn't include capers or overtime or any of the other taxes associated with the payroll dollars, but it also does look at a full four months, or three months in the fourth quarter, as well as estimating four vacancies in streets for street maintenance workers, and two in sanitation. And we know that we won't have individuals staffed for that period of time since we're currently in the fourth quarter. I'd be happy to answer any questions, but again, we were just looking at, kind of getting a jump on what's already been approved for two thousand and twenty-one. Staffs identified the following options for your consideration. Approving Resolution number twenty seven eight eight six, adopting the amended classified pay plan to incorporate the changes that were previously approved for two thousand and twenty-one. Approve Resolution twenty seven eight eight six with amendments, as you deem appropriate. Postpone consideration of Resolution twenty seven eight eight six to a specified date and time and provide direction on what additional information or amendments you would like to see, or decline to approve Resolution twenty seven eight eight six, and the changes that are noted would go into effect on January fourth, two thousand and twenty-one, and according to the pay plan that's already in place. And again, I'm happy to answer. Any questions?
Questions or comments?
No questions.
I just have one comment. I think there's going to be additional pressure put on us as an employer to, with, I'm not sure where our unemployment is right now, but I think we're considerably lower than the national average, and I know there's a lot of employers out there looking for employees. So if we're going to continue to keep qualified employees, I think this is probably something we're going to have to do, so. So any comments from the public?
This was published December thirty-first, two thousand and nineteen, in Norman, Manlis, Salina, Kansas. Sorry. On page B eight, the eleven deadliest jobs in America. If you pay your people according to the dangerous jobs, you're paying one group of people here in the city of Salina more money than the group that you have also working for the city that's being paid less. There's about a two-dollar discrepancy difference between these two groups. So that's something you need to address. Either you're going to have to raise these other people's wages, two dollars and some cents, or the people that you are paying more for doing a less danger job, you're going to have to reduce their salary.
Any other comments? Okay, if not, I will bring it back to the commission for action.
Mayor, I move we approve Resolution number twenty seven eight eight six, adopting the amended classified pay plan to incorporate the changes previously approved.
Second. Got a motion and a second to approve Resolution number two zero dash seven eight eight six. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? That passes four zero. Thank you, Ms. Fisher. That will lead us to seven point six.
Item seven point six, August thirty-first, two thousand and twenty, financial update.
Good afternoon, mayor and commissioners. Debbie Pack, Director of Finance. We're back again. Trying to make sure that we're standing on top of providing you the information with what's going on with the financials, and providing you the information as timely as we can possibly get it, even when it doesn't fit into the world of the financials. So today, we're presenting the actual numbers from August thirty-first. We also have data from the sales tax that we were distributed in September of two thousand and twenty. So we'll look at both those numbers. Just to take us back to where we were about a month ago, numbers were looking pretty good, so we were directed to continue with our revised budget expenses for commodities, contractual services, and capital outlay. We were continuing to look at each project by project and review them as needed. On the personnel side, we reimplemented the normal calculation on longevity. We did not, we discontinued the reduction of a ten percent reduction of executive staff that was originally put into place. And we also, you also directed us to bring all employees back off of work share and furlough no later than September fourteenth, two thousand and twenty. And as noted here, we're continuing to monitor the monthly performance and adjust as needed. So the twenty, the August numbers are on the next spreadsheet. A couple of notes that I will make, we have included in the projection, the nine hundred and five thousand dollars that's highlighted here in grants. That's the CARES Act that was provided and approved by the county. We did receive that money in September. That's why it's still in projections, because we're looking at August actuals. If you take a look at the totals for August, we're still tracking about where we were in July. I will make one note on franchise fees. The franchise gas fees for September, for August, did not come to us in the bank until September second, so they are not included in these numbers, and that's why franchise fees look like they're a little bit off. The number we collected in September was about three hundred and eighty thousand dollars. So that gets us back to where we thought we would anticipate, we would have been in August at this point. As you can see, we're still anticipating, we have two projections here. The first one is if we assume that our sales tax comes in at the rate at which it did in two thousand and nineteen, that's the first set of projections. And in that projection, we're still looking at a net income of a little over two-point-three million dollars. If we look at the projection that we originally made with one wave of COVID, with sales tax reacting a little bit different than what we were anticipating them to match in two thousand and nineteen, we're looking at a net income of about a little over one-point-five million dollars. I will note that any of the adjustments that Natalie brought up earlier have not been included in any of these projections. The other things that are not included in these projections yet are any additional funding to the TPEC fund, which we're not quite sure where that number's going to fall yet. After talking to the people running TPEC, I believe we're probably on track of being okay, but we still are looking at that. The Arts and Humanities Fund, which is supported by the general fund, is the other one that we're just keeping an eye on to see where that transfer's going to fall. The golf fund, as we know, is always pretty tight, so we're still keeping that on our radar to make sure it's tracking. The other item that is not included in here is the credit from OCCK for the reduction of what they're doing with the state. As we recall, they were going to reduce our contribution based on what the state had reduced their contribution, which is about four hundred thousand, we believe. And in the Lambert's refund of excess funds, it's not in the August numbers, it will be in the September numbers. That should be about a hundred and ten thousand between property tax and sales tax.
Just to clarify, the Lambert's is the Kohl's Tiff project.
Yes. And it did close and pay off the first of July, so those are funds that were left in the bank at the trustee that'll come, that came back to us, and then we had to redistribute back to all the taxing entities, and the city's portion of that was a little over a hundred and ten thousand dollars. The big question is always sales tax. What are we doing? Where are we at in sales tax? As you can see, in some of these projection, in some of these numbers, we're doing better than we originally projected. For example, in sporting goods, it's up to about a hundred and forty-eight percent. We're still high on automotive dealers, we're high in August, but they came back down in September. So these actually have both the August and September data in it for you. So you can see, in August, as you recall, when we presented last month, that the August sales tax appeared to be high. Now that we're getting into September, those numbers are coming back down and leveling off a little bit. I will note, the additional piece of paper that I left at the dais for you with the graph on it, this one, because we were confused, shows, we had known that the August sales tax looked like it was ballooning. So we're thinking, what the heck, what's going on? So when we got September, it dropped back down. So what we realized in looking at this data was that in two thousand and nineteen, September was a higher month. That's the number that we're seeing in the green on the end of that graph, and this year's August was high. So we're thinking there's something So we're thinking there's something in the timing of how things are submitted that may be causing that phenomenon. We're still looking at that. When I looked at the detail, I could see where some of the retailers had submitted two months of sales tax in August, and then last year, they did that in September. So we're hoping that that is just something that is happening because of timing, not because the sales tax are now falling in September.
And I don't know that we can speak with a lot of specifics, but we're hearing the states observing the same phenomenon.
Right.
And when I look at that, if you look at like just a four-month period, it's basically a wash from 2019 to 2020, even if with the variance between August and September or so.
It is. When we looked at those numbers, we were at like 0.3% in accumulative in 2020 compared to 2019. So it's really pretty flat at this point. As you recall, though, that is collections through the end of July, when unemployment benefits were still higher than normal. So it'll be interesting when we get to the end of October, what those numbers look like. This graph just gives us that projection. If we assume sales tax, the 2019 sales tax numbers come through, just how that equates month to month. As you can see, we have a pretty, we have a higher than normal revenue in September, which is partially because we get another distribution of property tax. And then our October, November, and December are pretty flat compared to those numbers. So we'll see that those numbers kind of level out in those last three months of the year. Then looking at the COVID projection, the first projection was a projection assuming that 2019 was our baseline. This is a projection based on the percentages that the, that with one wave, that our retail sales tax will come back in increments. In most cases, we have those coming back almost to 100% by the end of the year, but not all of them. Particularly, we were seeing auto dealers low, that's still low in our projections, and travel and accommodations is still low. We don't project that that's coming back fully by the end of the year. So that's why there's a difference in those two projections, because of the way we're assuming those percentages and those growth numbers to come back by the end of the year. Are there any questions in particular on the sales tax as we move forward? And like I said, once, when we get to the end of October and we actually get our distribution for the sales for August, that'll be an interesting number to see after the unemployment benefits were back down to, the $600 went away. So it'll be interesting to see where that number goes, and hopefully it'll be level with 2019 as we.
You said auto dealers were low?
We have projected them to be low in our COVID projections, to only come back to about 85%. What we saw was in August, they were very high.
And the schedule on page five.
In September, they went back down. So it's kind of one of those things that that may not be an accurate projection at this point.
The schedule on page five seems to say that they're 8% over what they were last year. Am I reading that correctly?
On page five.
Page five.
For auto dealers, in August, they were at 175% over our projection.
What I'm saying is the far left, far right, three columns, 2019 to 2020, it's saying there's an 8% increase.
Yes, in that scenario.
The scenario on page five is what we know to date, and in 2019, numbers projected out.
Okay. But auto dealers under that scenario are projected to grow by 8% over last year?
Correct.
Okay.
The lesser number that she's describing, if we continue for the remainder of the year, our original COVID projections.
Okay. I suspect that's going to be a rather conservative number based on year-to-date.
Yeah, under our original COVID projection, our projection is that they would be down 2% by the end of the year. So that, on page seven, that kind of shows where we were projecting as we've come along with the different projections through the information that we've been given through the COVID financial situation. So then this page eight is actually the month-by-month projection for, assuming the COVID projection comes in line, which is, as you recall, is the lower net income, because the sales tax for 2019 is higher than what we're projecting in this COVID projection. And realistically, we might come in somewhere in between. I mean, we don't really know at this point, so. Then we wanted to look at where we are as far as our COVID projection and compared to what we originally budgeted. Property tax, as we recall, we reduced that projection by about 10% based on what we felt was going to be delinquencies. That number is coming in pretty strong, so we anticipate that number just to be below what we originally projected in the original budget. Motor vehicle tax is coming in a little bit lower than we anticipated in the original budget.
That puzzles me a little bit, because you would think with new car sales up 8%, you buy a new car, you get taxed at a higher rate, and it seems like the motor vehicle taxes would follow, follow that. That's a little bit odd.
And it may be timing. It may be the timing of how these sales are coming in, and we're comparing it to a three-year average as opposed to what we're seeing currently. So that may, that may, those numbers may get tighter as we go to the, through the end of the year.
And the last distribution on that is in October?
Yes.
Okay. Do you know, at one time, the county was a little bit, the county treasurer's office would be a little bit erratic, because typically, you know, they collect money from October through December, and for a period of time, depending on the county treasurer at the time, they might distribute those at the end of December.
Right.
Which makes the current year look real well.
Right.
But then the next year, when they didn't distribute them until the following January, it made it look pretty bad.
Right.
And I hope they're being consistent with that now, because it makes it a whole lot easier to understand what's happening.
Yes, it seems like they have been over the past few years, but I've seen that happen too. They're not required by statute to distribute, but sometimes they do.
Sometimes they want to be a nice guy and, you know, give the money out earlier.
And I can tell you with respect to that, as well as sales tax, we've tried to be very mindful of looking at, in the monthly distributions and then identifying any anomalies, whether a spike or a sag, and trying to decipher whether it's a timing issue. It doesn't change the actuals, and it doesn't change our performance compared to budget.
Yeah, right. But it does help you understand some of the numbers that can look a little weird from time to time.
Yes. And as you recall, too, they did have a delay in registration at, they had a 60-day delay of your.
And that may be impacting the.
And that may be impacting the timing of these payments.
The timing issue on motor vehicle revenue.
So we may see a higher, higher collection as we get into the September and the, actually the October distribution.
Yeah.
The September distribution is not in here either, because we're only looking at August. I did not look at that number to see what it is, motor vehicle, but I certainly can do that. Franchise fees, this number I think is as low based on the fact that that number for September is not in here. So I anticipate that these two numbers will also get a little bit closer as we get those numbers caught up in here. I think they're still going to be a little bit lower than we originally budgeted, but it won't be as wide of a gap as we anticipate at this point. EMS revenues, these two are lower than what we originally budgeted. We do have a proposal that will be coming to you for fee adjustments like we did last year, which might help, but it probably won't be in time to affect this year's. As far as we know, the calls are still going out, the collections are still being made.
So is the number of calls down? Is that the issue?
That's not what we're hearing particularly.
Well, I believe some of the lesser calls that may have been discretionary or non-emergency are down, but the activity overall is not down significantly, but that might attribute for some of those differences.
And transfers are significantly down. Because other hospitals are not willing to take patients from this area.
I mean, there's got to be something that leads to, because this is actually a fairly large discrepancy.
Yes.
If you look at it.
And transfers was something that the fire department had mentioned early on that are way down because of the COVID virus.
And we've imposed limitations on what transfers will take because of COVID, so that can impact it as well.
But there has to be something to explain that. Total calls aren't, something's got to be down to.
Yeah, like Mike said, I believe they did say that some of the people that would just call because they had a cold or something like that, maybe it weren't as serious, that didn't have the insurance to cover, a doctor's visit or something like that are down.
But as far as, you know, we're still filing timely, delinquencies are about the same.
We are.
Okay.
Yes. Municipal court has a big discrepancy between the original budget and the COVID projection. I did reach out to them, I have not gotten a response from them, but we do know that the court was closed down for two months. So in looking at these numbers, this is something that we're just going to have to keep an eye on and make sure. I did run a comparison from 2017 to 2020, and all but, there's three months in 2020 that actually were higher than our 2019 numbers, but the other five months are all lower, are pretty significantly lower than they were in 2018.
I could be wrong, but I think part of this may be that we did close the court for a significant amount of time, and then the way we calculate this projection is carrying forward the impact of that closure for the remainder of the year, when we are now back to normal, and we're trying to catch back up.
Yeah, it seems to me that even if we were closed for a period of time, unless we dialed back on citations and arrests and whatever else might feed the county court, that that turns into a backlog of cases that they might take some time to work through, but they should, that should come back, I would think.
Well, we also know that the police were not out actively citing people because of COVID, so there was some, you know, restriction in there.
Okay, so there could be an actual change in the number of citations that were issued during this period of time.
Right.
Okay.
Sales and use taxes, you can see, these numbers, our COVID projection is right at our original budget, basically because we budgeted right at what 2019 was going to be. So we anticipate that this number, which is the number that we were most concerned with when we started COVID, will hopefully still come in at least at what we originally budgeted in 2020. The other thing we like to do is, when we started this process back in the beginning of April, we set certain projections that, based on the information that we had at that time. So slide 15 actually compares our August actuals to what the projections would have been for August in those original 30-day, 30, 60, and 90-day projections. The first slide is revenues, and our revenue projections for property and sales tax are higher than what we originally projected. Our EMS revenue is below what we originally projected. Sales, or property tax is up about $486,000 over our year-to-date projection from 4/13. Our sales tax through September, because we have those September numbers, is actually about $1.9 million higher than what we were projecting back in April. Our EMS is about $463,000 lower than what we had projected back in April. Then on the expense side, when we projected in April, we did not have in place a lot of the steps that we knew we were going to take to cut expenses in anticipation of revenue shortfalls. So at that point, we did not have any of the personnel reductions for work share or furloughs. We did have the part-time employee reductions in here, and we also did have some of the reductions in the capital and commodities and contractual services. So as you can see in the expenditure side, our personnel services, employee benefits, commodities, and contractuals are all under what we originally projected the cost of those to be at this time back in April. And there were no significant ones that were higher than they would have, we were anticipating them to be at this time back in April. Personnel services are lower than projected by about $1.7 million. Commodities are about $330,000 under what we projected. Contractual services are about $378,000 less than what we projected back in April, and capital outlay is about $36,000 higher than what we projected. But if you remember, with commodities, contractual services, and capital outlay, the spending for those items is not predictable. Typically, what happens is somebody has a budget, and they might spend half of it in February and the other half in October. So it's really hard to predict when those expenses will come in, but we would anticipate that most departments will spend up to what they're budgeted. So those numbers should level out. Will probably will be under, because they can only spend up to a certain amount, but we wouldn't anticipate that they'd be a lot under what we had projected back in April.
Ms. Pack touched on this, but I'll say it in a little bit different way. The April study session that we're comparing to was that calculation that we provided you, that with all the measures we'd identified so far, what was our gap? And so we did not have capital, commodities, and personnel in those assumptions. That's when you tasked staff with, go out and find a way to close that gap, and that's when work share came into the conversation. So to say that, you know, all these numbers are significantly less, confirms that's what you wanted, that we implemented the plan that we talked about, and we're hitting those numbers. It's not an indictment on the April numbers, it's kind of where we were at in that process at that point in time.
Right. So the other thing that's important to remember in this whole scenario is, there's a couple of things, unemployment and COVID. Those are the two things that are really driving the financial stability of what's going on in our environment. So the August 2020 unemployment rate data that was brought in, or that was provided, shows that in the United States, the unemployment rate in August 2020 was 8.4% compared to 3.7% at the same time last year. The state of Kansas is 6.9% compared to 3.1% last year. And in Celine County, it's at 6.4% compared to 3.2% last year. One thing I will note, I was reading an article this morning, and some of the current concerns there were that we had a lot of temporary layoffs due to COVID, and now that we're kind of, people are getting settled in, and businesses are really finding out what they can and cannot do, that there's a lot more claims for permanent unemployment. This wasn't directed at Salina or Celine County, it was general in the United States. So whatever that effect that might have on Celine County, that's just something we'll have to keep an eye on and be cognizant of, that there could be some permanent layoffs that affect these unemployment numbers as we move forward. The COVID rates, the United States has over 7.2 million cases. Celine County Health Department, and as we know, these change daily, so these numbers were from, I think, last Thursday. 776 cases in Celine County with 11 deaths. The one that I think is interesting is the one, the graph on the bottom right-hand side, where it shows those cases that have started to increase in early July and just exponentially have increased over that time period. I also included the gating criteria that is being used kind of for the school districts and some other decisions that are being made, just so that we had that information available, and we kind of had an idea of what that information looked like. This is all comes from the Celine County Health Department website. There's still a lot of uncertainty in our future, as we know. We don't know if there's going to be another outbreak, if there's going to be more closures. I read this morning that New York City was closing some of their districts, their ZIP codes, and as we know, they were the first one back in March to be highly affected by COVID. We know the $600 unemployment supplement expired in July. However, we also know that $300 unemployment supplement will be effective back to that date, but only for those that collected $100 or more in unemployment. So anybody that was only, was collecting less than $100 is not eligible for that $300 unemployment supplement. And that number is dictated by the number, the earnings that you have. The maximum rate of unemployment is $488 a week, and it goes by the five week or month, if Natalie were here, she could tell me, average of your salary for the previous five quarters or something like that. So a lot of our restaurant people and people like that probably weren't even earning at the maximum. I think the cutoff was about $50-some thousand a year that got you to that maximum amount. So there could be many people that weren't even at that rate. We don't know what unemployment benefits are going to be going forward. I think the $300 is in effect till the end of the year. Do you remember?
I honestly don't know.
I don't remember for sure. We don't know if there's going to be any additional stimulus, which obviously has helped us in our sales tax information. We have not gotten any business closure information to date from the chamber, but that's something we probably need to look at a little bit closer. Inventory, if you go to the store, if you look at the car dealerships. Inventory, if you go to the store, if you look at the car dealerships, you know, lots and things like that, you're seeing, you're seeing some shortages out there. So it's something that we really need to take into consideration is, is there a delay in that, in production? And school is going to be another one that we just are constantly going to have to monitor and the effect that that has on employers and employees, especially if their children are sent home or they go to something less than a hybrid model where they have to be at home to take care of them. There's still a lot of information that's out there. And I think that's the message that we've been saying all along is, we hate to make you wait, but you know, every month changes our situation. I will say though, when we get to the end of October, we will have the September collections of sales tax, which I think will be helpful information, the August sales, because that will be after that $600. And I'll be curious to see what that does to sales tax, along with people not storing a lot of stuff anymore, because they're kind of getting to the point where they think, oh, nothing's ever going to happen, so I don't need to have a stockpile. So that's some of the other information that we're reading is that people are no longer going out and buying 12 packages of toilet paper because they don't see the need. But I think also, you know, if things still continue to ramp up, we could see that happen again. The other thing we'll see at the end of September, we won't see a full, full effects of bringing our staff back to full employment, full employment, because we didn't, we had a date of September 14th and not, we staggered. There was a lot of employees that came back that first week and a lot that didn't come back to the last week. So we really won't get the true effect of what that cost is until we get into the next month, which will be October. But we should have a pretty good idea, some idea in September. Basically, in my mind, we stay the course and we kind of keep watching it. I mean, that's all, you know, unless you have other direction for us or other information you'd like to get from us, that's basically where we'll go.
Yeah, I guess I would add, admittedly, there is, at this point, we're projecting some balance, some positive impact on the general fund reserve balance. The bulk of that is attributable to that $1.7 million savings in wages, the way that we approached work share. And as Ms. Pack mentioned, there'll be a little bit more of that financial benefit as we get through the implementation through September 14th. But we, I feel like, you know, that was a lot of work and effort and sacrifice on the part of employees and the community, but we bought ourselves some capacity there by taking the approach that we did on work share. That capacity is now available to us to ride out the rest of the year and see how some of these unknowns play out. And I think we're in a good position. I don't feel any obligation to say, well, that's savings realized. Now we have to find somewhere to spend it. We tried to buy ourselves some financial capacity to put ourselves in the position we now find ourselves. And maybe we can ride out the rest of the year and see how it plays out.
Did I miss it, or did you say when that franchise number would be clearer? And or how much of that gap, that million-dollar gap might close?
It was about $380,000. It'll be in the September. There'll be two months of posting in September, one at the early and one at the end for that franchise.
Correct me if I'm wrong. We didn't receive it in August, but we have received it in early September.
We received two payments in September. We didn't receive any payments in August. It was just a timing issue.
And that was on the gas franchise?
Yeah, electric.
Electric, okay. That makes more sense. I think you said gas, or I heard you say gas.
Sorry, it was electric.
So what we're seeing is the numbers look like they're on track. One of the comments I would have to make about that franchise projection, and again, I think it's going to be better than what you have, because typically, our big electric franchise payments, which is our largest one, typically peak in August, September, October. Even though this summer was reasonably cool, and I expect that peak not to be as high as it has been, we should expect some pretty good payments in those three to four months. So it may, my prediction, but I'm not betting anything on it, is that that'll end up looking better by year-end, absent anything else happening.
As we put our projections together though, we anticipate all that. So we need to see that just to catch up with the projection.
It's just the pattern on the graph doesn't make sense to me, you know? It just doesn't fit what I think the distribution is going to look like, but we'll see.
When will we be getting our next transient guest tax?
We get those quarterly.
And we got one in July, right?
Uh, July, I was talking about that. So we should get one in October, I think.
Okay.
That's another one we have to really watch.
Right.
And that would be the last one we get.
Okay.
Because the quarters kind of mesh over into the next year.
Right.
I know they did get a boost from Jaded Thunder, but I think once Jaded Thunder left, their numbers dropped way down, so.
Well, you know, the sales tax, it looks like they're running at about 74% of what we expected. So that's quite a ways down, not quite as far as we expected. But I suspect transient guest tax will follow that sales tax lead. It's going to be down considerably.
So as a recap, unless you provide us direction otherwise, our intention is to stay the course, continue to provide you these reports as more information becomes available, recognizing that if we see a downturn, we've now, within the 2020 fiscal year, built some capacity to absorb that downturn, if it doesn't get too ominous and drastic.
Property taxes are, come out in November and do in December. When do we get that number from the county as to where we're at on property tax payments?
For 2020.
For, it'd be actually, yeah, it'd be the first half of 2020.
They'll distribute that to us in January. So the payments that they, the second half payment that was made in May, they would have distributed to us in June. Then they have some things that straggle in with people paying late or anything like that. So we did get one, a payment in September, and then we'll get a small one in October.
Right. I guess my concern is in January to see where we are in property taxes. And again, depending on if there's another stimulus package or whatever happens as to where our sales tax is and going into 2021, because it's going to be, it's going to, we're going to have to keep an eye on it. Right now, we, I think we're doing everything we want it to, and I think we're, but that could turn and. Any other questions or comments? Comments from the public? Okay. Thank you for all your work, Ms. Pack. That will lead us into 7.7.
Item 7.7, downtown sidewalk dining licenses and regulations, 7.7A. Resolution number 20-7879, authorizing the mayor to execute an amended and restated sidewalk cafe license agreement with PB&amp;J Restaurants Incorporated. 7.7B, resolution number 20-7878, amending and replacing in full the city of Salina administrative regulations pertaining to both placement of signs, outdoor furniture, flower pots, planters, and bicycle racks into sidewalk dining in the C4 business district and repealing resolution number 14-7111.
Okay.
Would you like me to go first with this or after staff presentation?
It's up to you. Let's see, who's doing staff presentation? Mr. Oh, I was looking for, you moved on me. Okay. Okay. Go ahead.
Mr. Mayor, Commissioners. I think probably the easiest place to start is, we'll do a little legislative history to kind of give some timeline to what we are discussing here, as the clerk so announced a few minutes ago. So the first item we want to look at is, in June of 2014, resolution 7111 was passed. And that resolution dealt both with what I often refer to as like temporary fixtures and structures downtown. Those are flower pots, a cute chair outside the door, a vintage suitcase, bike racks even, a few things like that that can be moved easily in and out. But the second portion of that had to do with sidewalk cafe license agreements. And there were several kind of design and layout components in there, along with some operational guidelines. In May of 2018, ordinance 10933 was adopted, and that was only about sidewalk dining. So we're beyond the temporary structures. We're just talking about sidewalk dining. And it was an attempt by staff kind of recognizing as the streetscape had begun and more interest was coming to sidewalk dining, which we really hadn't implemented even in 2014. Nobody was doing it. To try and provide some flexibility and additional clarification or regulation in there. If you look at the actual adopted chapter, it's really about how to apply, what happens throughout the application, how do you stay continuous with your license agreement and reapply. Very process-based, not really how you're behaving as a sidewalk dining license holder or how and what you're being approved on as far as what that space looks like. So that's why you're seeing in 18 and 14, these guidelines being brought forward. The intention of the ordinance in 2018 would have been to repeal or replace what was adopted in that resolution from 2014. And that specifically, there is some language in there that talks about the city manager being able to promulgate further regulations necessary to implement the provisions of that article and is authorized to amend and repeal any existing regulations that implement the provisions of that article. Typically in downtowns, there's kind of a couple of different schools of thought when you're applying these types of regs. Some places like to put everything in an ordinance. Some places like to have adopted guidelines. It just kind of depends. The guidelines are usually recognized as being a bit more flexible. And as the environment changes, sometimes applicants bring things forward that no one ever thought of before. You can amend those guidelines a little bit more on the fly. A lot of times too, in downtowns, you need that flexibility. And the business owners are often kind of trying to push creative ideas. And so being able to have flexible code is important. But on the flip side of that, being tight to measurements is also an important thing, because we're going to talk a little bit about how that built environment gets awfully busy and why those measurements do matter. But that was how we got through to today. As I'm sure many of you know, in the last couple of years, really starting in 2018, and you'll see there's a table in the staff report, we have Ultra Chicago with an approved sidewalk dining permit. Even though they actually have not enacted it, they, if you look at their sidewalk dining, for those listening at home, is actually on private property. It's into where the building would have originally been. So it doesn't come out into the right-of-way, even though they do have that license agreement. That's a memorable one for staff, because their original proposal had fireplaces, like in the wall. And we were a little concerned with live fire in a wall. Blue Sky in May of 2018. Barilo Grills, I will make a note, one of the exceptions there is it's in a plaza, not that typical sidewalk right-of-way scenario for July of 2019. Yaya's has both one out front and in the courtyard. The one out front is a sidewalk dining license. The one in the courtyard is a conditional use permit, because it's on private property. Starbucks is around the corner, also in the sidewalk. Martinelli's, July 20th, 2020, also on the sidewalk. And then Dagny's Ice Cream in the sidewalk, July 2020. The difference too, and something a little different about Dagny's is, they do not serve alcohol, so there was no fencing required with that one. So it's slightly different than the others. And that's a good point to make. It's typically why do a sidewalk dining license permit versus like temporary tables, like AdAs or Hassem Tables. That falls under that temporary furniture and fixture ordinance we talked about, where those things that can come in and out every night can stay there with minimal permitting. But once you affix something to the sidewalk, it needs to be a license agreement. And one way to think about it is, the right-of-way is slightly different than public property and typical private property. It has designated uses to it. And so when you permanently add things to the right-of-way, the agreement between the city and that licensee is very important in that situation, because it's meant to stay there for a considerable amount of time. In the case of our sidewalk dining licenses, the way they're set up is, the initial application is really the largest hurdle. And then there's an annual renewal process. So there's nothing in the license agreement that says, this is good for three years and then never again, or you have to come back and do this in three years. It's just an annual renewal process of submitting your application, review, inspection. If it's good, then it's good to go. It doesn't need to come back to the body to be reactivated or anything like that. It does, by current code, need to go in front of the DRB Design Review Board for final approval for their annual renewals. Based on this timeline, the way code is written, we actually haven't had anybody renew yet. So this year will be our first year for renewals. So with all of that, let's talk about the current problem and proposed solutions we have for you. Probably the most significant thing at this moment is what we consider a clear path of travel. And why I mention those two sections of code is, the 2018 code exists, but one of the things in that is, it requires, as I mentioned, the city manager to promulgate some regulations. We have not, he has not, prior city manager has not promulgated those regulations. So therefore, that part really hasn't happened. And resolution 147111 is still on the books. And so that's really what we've been reviewing too, and what we've been using. And when we talk about clear path of travel, there are three significant numbers in there, two that are specifically outlined. And it's related to that clear path of travel being at least six feet in width. But it should never be less than four feet. There are exceptions in that four-feet category, and they can include permanent plantings, permanent street lights, and other permanent obstructions. Typically, we see municipal signage, like parking or safety signage, sometimes mailboxes, things like that, that are often considered in these types of ordinances. So our current code, if we look at 147111, says you can have things in that lesser right-of-way, but they need to be permitted, particularly in a license agreement. So in reviewing our current sidewalk dining applications that have been approved, of the seven locations, four of those are currently in violation. And that violation occurs from the fact that when these were reviewed, nobody was considering or had noted, both on the applications that were submitted and both in plans that were being used to review, that the light poles had not been installed. There was a great consideration by staff, looking at benches, looking at planter boxes, trying to keep up with the most current set of plans. But the light posts were not in a lot of the plans. In fact, the plan set is over 250 pages for downtown streetscape, and the electrical section's way at the back, and it's quite small. Not a reason to have missed those, and I think staff all around is quite disappointed we've missed that piece. I think I'm the only one who looks at this as kind of a silver lining, because as somebody who's been writing a lot of downtown code over the last year, this six-foot number was kind of presented to us as like, this is what it should be. But we've been trying to kind of build an airplane while we're flying it. And now having our built environment and knowing that six feet is almost unattainable. By the time we add sculptures, and sculpture name plaques, and benches, and planters, and lights, it gets to be crowded. It's cozy. It's not crowded. It's cozy down there. And so one or two inches can make quite a difference in where we put something. Some lessons learned too, have nothing to do with reviewing the right set of plans or having had the electrical plans. It has to do with the fact of things we just would never have guessed. Like some of the fences came in, and they're base footings. When we reviewed the plans and looked at the specs presented by the applicants, had width dimensions, but never considered the bases. Well, when you have one-inch bracket on either side, suddenly your clear path of travel is eaten up by two inches. Okay, so noted that we need to emphasize brackets when reviewing those. Some of the furniture and fencing that came in was different than what the owners had expected, but they were eager to get them installed. That's a problem though. If what they got was different than what they had expected, whether it was from COVID or whatever, if it's different dimensions, different widths, it can affect the application. And so really knowing those measurements is critical in this. So we went through, you've got in Table 2, it breaks down each of the locations and how those different measurements work out. And you'll see, I would say Row 3 in green is probably the most notable, and that's clear path of travel. I would like to also point out though, that Row 4 is available with the travel. In most of these, where you've got that pinch point of, let's take Martinelli's, for instance, you've got five feet, 10 inches of clear path of travel in that one spot where the light post is. The rest of it, through that area, is significantly larger. So it's not like all, the whole entire area in front of that downtown dining area is of that size. It's usually just a pinch point. So one of the questions I had to ask- So one of the questions I had to ask was, how did we get here? You know, why the six feet? Obviously, in 2014, we must have picked that for a reason. Was it idealistic? Was it a hope? And how did we come to that number? From what I can dig up, Lawrence had been used as a prominent example when we were trying to figure out our downtown dining regulations in 2014, as they're a great Kansas example of a very active downtown. Another really good example, and many Salinas have visited this area, is Denver and their 16th Avenue Mall area. Both good examples, both have huge sidewalks, like huge, significantly larger than ours. And so the idea of reaching that six feet, as aspirational as it is, just really isn't always possible based on the width of sidewalk we have. I think one of the other challenges in Resolution 147111 is language like "shall" versus "should", or "whenever possible" is often, in other codes that we looked at, "whenever possible, six feet." That doesn't say, "thou must be six feet." It's just saying, "that's your best practice." I think the next thing to look at is, are we able to meet ADA requirements? If we try to look at, what is a possible solution for this? So ADA tells us that a wheelchair, whether we're looking at building code, or we're looking at streets design standards, needs at least four feet of width. Optimally, you'd like five feet clear path of travel. That gives room for maneuvering. As I mentioned earlier, I think one of the challenges of what we've been going through of trying to apply, whether it's Resolution 147111, or looking at new downtown codes, is you didn't have an existing built environment. You know, you can have the best drawings in the world, but being able to stand out there and get a sense of what that distance really looks like, of having all those things in place, and seeing what that built environment means to those regulations is really important. So the solutions we are presenting to you today is, one, to amend the Sidewalk Cafe license agreement that we have with Yaya's, that contains the one light post, as you'll see in Table 2, that is, we refer to it as the south light post, that is four feet, three inches. So that is in that category, in which our current code says, you could come ask the city commission for permission, and it must be highlighted in the license agreement, that that is an allowable reduction in that clear path of travel. But our current code does allow for that. Secondly, we would suggest keeping 147111, as it stands at this moment, with a minor revision of taking the six feet of mandatory path of travel, and bringing that down to five feet of mandatory path of travel. With that still four-foot exception from the city commission in those certain circumstances, light post is just a great example, but those other types of infrastructure that might be in that path. The reason we are suggesting we stay with Resolution 147111 is, we would have, in March of this year, as we were shutting down, should have been adopting the new downtown design standards for Art and Entertainment District. There is a new sidewalk dining license section to that. I would hate to pull that one out of context with the other things, plus I got to go change the six feet in it. But pull those things out of context, and adopt it before we adopt the other pieces. 7111 is not bad, but I also have a hard time keeping something where realistically, we're not going to make that six feet. And five is a lot more reasonable, a lot more doable, and it just makes more sense for the way our built environment has finally laid out. Knowing what we're knowing here, and knowing kind of the cluster between having a resolutions with some guidelines, and ordinance with some stuff, I'd rather just could tail it down, do an ordinance, and put it all in one chapter, so it's a lot easier to follow. And that would be our intent this spring. I think beyond code, and having a code or regulatory issue, we have a process issue. Internally, we had revised the process to basically have a quick check-in with everybody once the application came in, to say, you know, we call it our DRT group, so that's Design Review Team, that includes fire, engineering, planning, and utilities, to make sure, did everyone see this? Do we have any major issues? We had done that, and we're doing that, but formalizing that down, and having everybody submit written instruction or written comments, we hadn't formalized in LAMA. You'll also see, I've added a new review process document in here, and adjusted it to add a few more steps. And I hate to add more steps, because one of the things we heard distinctly from the downtown stakeholder group in working on that project was, you need to keep things easier for us. Keep things simpler. And I agree with that 100% when it's applicable, but I do think sidewalk dining is kind of unique in of itself. Its very permanent nature makes it different than a busker or a food cart that can be rolled over a couple of inches if it needs to, versus, you know, feet and feet of permanent fencing and tables. And it's not only about the right-of-way for us, it's also about the applicant and making that investment, that we need to kind of make sure that's working for everybody by the time it gets to the end. So additional steps that we are recommending in the revised process, and that does not take formal city commission action, is, I think lesson learned is, we need to do a site visit, actually in the beginning. Typically, we do a site inspection at the end. But because that built environment gets so cozy, and we even saw it with measuring, the way you measure something, and you measure something, can actually be slightly different. And when one or two inches makes a difference, you really need to have a couple people down there, both with the design professionals from the applicant, or the applicant themselves, and probably planning and engineering staff to go, okay, is everybody looking at the built environment the same? Is this going to turn out the way it's intended? And then, prior to, or we do public notice, of course, for Design Review Board, which goes out to those neighboring entities, DRB meeting, but the DRB can actually make recommended changes to an application as it comes to the city commission, and putting that back in front of that review group to say, does everybody see what the DRB said? Will that cause a problem? Because the DRB may have looked at it maybe from an aesthetic point of view, or materials point of view, but as I said, like, a different material order can change the width of a fencing by a couple of inches, which then affects that total overall outcome. So there's that in-between if there are changes. Following city commission, notice to proceed, and a final inspection. So the stuff arrive, whether it's fencing, furniture, or whatnot, seeing it installed and making sure what was on the paper and what is installed is quite critical. We've been trying to do that, but not having it formalized, we're not getting the feedback from the applicants of, yep, we're ready for you to come inspect. And a lot of times, we're finding out about it kind of on the back end. So the permit system using LAMA kind of creates those queries automatically. So at the end of the week, when I pull like open inspections, I can see that those haven't been scheduled. Certificate of completion, actually, the way code reads, you're supposed to post and have onsite evidence that you have this license agreement. A certificate of completion is a lot easier to post than your entire license agreement. You should have it on file, but that's an easy thing to post. And then finally, signed license agreement. With that, looking at fiscal impact, the options that staff has presented today through the two resolutions and the change to the license agreement, do not have a dolatary amount attached to them, other than staff time to change both process and regulation. But if the city commission chooses not to go through that, and would like to move the light post at Yaya's, the southern light post, that has been estimated at $3,370 to do that. So if that is something the city commission would like us to do, that is an option. With that, you have in front of you two resolutions. Resolution 207878 includes amending and replacing in full the City of Salinas administrative regulations pertaining both to the placement of signs, outdoor furniture, flowerpots, planters, and bicycle racks, and to sidewalk dining in the C4 Business District, and repealing Resolution 14-7111. And then the other resolution is Resolution 20-7879, a resolution authorizing the mayor to execute an amended and restated Sidewalk Cafe license agreement with PB&amp;J Restaurant, Inc., who are the proprietors of Yaya's European Bistro. Staff would request that the commission act on 7878 first, since that deals with the overall amendment and replacement of that ordinance, and that would leave only the one light post in noncompliance, and that could be dealt with through Resolution 7879. I stand for questions. Thank you.
If I could offer just a little bit of recap before questions, and I'm repeating what Ms. Driscoll said, but want to make sure it's clear. If we had caught, as staff, we had caught these dimensional issues at review, the process that was in place by Resolution 147111 would have allowed for you, as the governing body, to authorize everything that's in the field, in terms of what's currently installed. You would have, we would have called it to your attention, you could have deliberately granted the exception that the resolution contemplates. And so as we talk about being a violation, it's not necessarily a hard and fast dimensional violation. We failed to catch it, and we failed to then make it part of your approval process. So as Ms. Driscoll mentioned, there's four locations, there's five dimensional issues. Four of those fall between five and six feet. So the five-foot solution would resolve four of the five. The remaining one is in excess of four feet, so it's still compliant with ADA, so we don't have any ADA violations. But if we took that six-foot dimension down to five feet, that's the one that would still require a governing body approval of that exception. We also talked about the fact that there is that language about the city manager having authority to promulgate additional guidelines, but I made the determination that that could be in supplementation to what's in place, but I was not at all comfortable, just as that authority, interpreting that to be a grant of authority to the city manager to directly conflict with the site plan that was attached to the license agreement, what you, as a governing body, had approved and led to believe. So we very deliberately chose to bring this back to you, so that you're fully aware of it, and that we can amend the license agreements, if you so choose, formally, rather than trying to interpret that in any way that the city manager had authority to do that administratively. So with that, I hope you can see from the staff report, and you may have noticed on the agenda planner, this has been on the agenda planner, and it kept getting kicked back and kicked back. That was because of the level of detail, and the level of staff work, and the number of meetings and conversations we had to try to decipher what all the code provisions were, where the mistake happened, what the solution was, and what would be an appropriate recommendation, in our opinion, for you. So trying to be as transparent as possible, and give you all the background information so that you can make an informed decision at this point. With that, I'd either want us to be happy to try to answer questions.
Mayor Hoppick, I would request that we have an executive session, and I'll make a motion and see where it goes from here. I move that the city commission recess into executive session for 10 minutes, to discuss the subject of specific, non-elected employees' performance, based upon the need to discuss personnel matters of non-elected personnel pursuant to KSA 75-4319B1, and that the participating members in the executive session be limited to the governing body. The open meeting will resume in this room at 5:54? Am I doing that right? 5:54 PM.
We have a motion for executive session. Do we have a second? I will second, just to get it on the agenda. So we have a motion, a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
Okay. Okay. Okay, questions for staff?
So I'm wondering if, and I presume they would approve, since this is making things more flexible, but the bid district and the master developer, they're on board with this. And the new steps that you added, is staff going to be able to keep up with those things? You're adding quite a few site visits, plus other steps.
I guess at this point, I'd rather add them, do them, and have these turn out right. And if a couple years down the road, we say, you know what, city commission, I think these are one too many steps, we seem to be fine at this, then we can always pull them back. But at this point, if I look at where we're having challenges in this process, it's on making sure everybody's on the same page about what these look like in the built environment, and then how that gets into the built environment is the same as it was on the paper.
And you're saying, all these things are really flexible. We're going to reconsider when we get the downtown ordinance? I mean, this is not something we've got to live with forever. It could, it's going to adapt.
Well, all code is never forever, right? It's always adaptable. I think there are several things. The approach that we have taken to the downtown regulations is trying to be as nimble, as flexible, and minimal as possible, particularly when something is temporary. So if it's easy to scoot something over, when there's a concern about those measurements, or concern about that placement, it's a very easy thing to fix. But once you permanently put something in there, you really need to be conscious of that, because that permanent thing will then, again, affect how all those other things play in the built environment. So if there's, in my, this is just my professional opinion, if there's one that you want to be strict about right now, it's probably these, sidewalk dining license, because out of all the different types of uses, whether it's entertainers, food carts, those types of things, those are all mobile. This isn't. It gets permanently attached. And realistically, will be there for some time. Usually, a restaurant doesn't make this kind of investment, if it's just going to do it for a couple of years. So getting these right, making sure they're installed right, are worth it. And we got a lot in the last couple of years, only because it's new. It's not the kind of thing, like, you're not going to be slammed with these 20 every year, because by the time you take downtown itself, you only have so many restaurants. And so many that are going to make the investment into downtown dining. We'll probably get to a point here in the next couple of years, that you've got most your outdoor dining maxed out. And again, you really only like the outdoor dining license if you're serving alcohol, because then you have to have the fence by state law, in which to kind of corral those people serving alcohol. Otherwise, a lot of times, you can do it through temporary furniture, like Seraphim Bread's got theirs out in the plaza, that's temporary, Ad Astra's got theirs that's temporary. So I think, yes, flexible. We have some things we will change in the spring, but what I want to be clear about is that clear path of travel recommendation, as far as what we're saying we should change in 147111, I would still stand by five feet, four feet criteria versus the six and four. That answers your question.
I appreciate that. For me, just in my opinion, I'd like to see these things happen as administratively as possible, and I'm not going to second-guess the staff or the city manager on these kinds of decisions.
I have a question that doesn't deal with process, but how is Old Chicago not six-foot? Because they are, isn't their, their dining is inset, so those frontages are zero setback, correct?
So what you're considering their dining isn't even a sidewalk license agreement. They would come out from that again.
But what's the five-foot eight that shows on?
All of this information is based on their proposed installation, which they have not installed.
Okay, well, that was my question.
Yeah, so if you look at their site plan of what they...
So technically, Old Chicago is not in violation, because they don't have anything there yet.
Yeah, I was confused, because the way I was reading this, I was reading it as they were in violation. I was trying to figure out how that could be.
Now, having said that though, if you enact this, and then they come back and decide they want to take us up on the license agreement that was approved, they could proceed based on that license agreement, and dimensionally, they would be okay.
Because they'd be five-eight instead of...
Right.
Okay, that makes, okay, that's, I wanted some clarification on that.
I don't think they have any intention of doing that, but it would address that while we're at it.
But if they didn't make that fix and installed it today, they would be in violation. So we didn't deal with this code.
Okay. Okay, that answers that.
Okay, as I understand it, what Resolution 20-7878 does is replaces all of those regulations... is replaces all of those regulations, but realistically, the real change that's being made is from six feet to five feet.
Correct.
Everything else pretty much remains the same.
Not pretty much does.
Okay. And furthermore, section thirty-five two seventy still authorizes the city manager to promulgate regulations necessary to implement the provisions of this article. You know, I understand the city manager's concerned with that. I'm not sure that the ordinance saying that gives him the authority to change the resolution.
Right, I am not going to promulgate a rule that directly contradicts what the resolution says.
Yeah, I mean, you might issue something that interprets that.
Right.
But to change it directly, I think, would be outside the scope of authority. I appreciate you recognizing that.
Well, and frankly, staff will not recommend that either, knowing kind of where we're moving forward with downtown arts and entertainment, and I think Mike and I are on the same page, that we've had a lot of good feedback with the downtown arts and entertainment group that there's no reason not to have that in code. And we've talked about this at the beginning. We will have to probably come back twelve months after adopting most of those codes and go, okay, here's what we've learned. This didn't work, this did work, this is the best way to apply that. But it's kind of part and parcel with trying to have that active downtown component and trying to take the best examples from everywhere, trying to apply them in our situation, but not having a lot of past experience in our own environment to say, yeah, this did or didn't work is part of the challenge.
Okay, so, resolution twenty dash seventy-eight seventy-eight changes that width to five feet and provides that if that cannot be met, that the applicant can then come to the city commission in some manner and petition for an exception to that five-foot rule, so that if there was a, you know, four-foot, nine-inch pinch point, as you say, we could override that five-foot consideration and allow the installation.
And the code specifically says that the place that you should be doing that is in the license agreement.
Okay. And then seventy-eight seventy-nine essentially retroactively provides such permission to PB and J or Yaya's for their one post that is, results in a narrow pathway. Now, that four-feet, three inches, that does meet ADA requirements, and I'm having trouble, I guess, visualizing that. If you were to go through there in a wheelchair, four feet is not sufficient for two wheelchairs to pass through there, passing each other. There would have to be, it's a one-way. Could a wheelchair in four-feet, three inches do a one-eighty spin?
I don't know an answer to that, but like, when we, when we look at building code, for instance, of like, clear path of travel for a doorway and stuff like that, four feet is that minimum width.
Is the...
And when I say pinch point, I think it's kind of worth noting, too, is that curb in some of that area in front of Yaya's actually bumps out a bit. So, if you did have two wheelchairs, there is a possibility of pulling to the side, letting one pass, and then going.
Sure, sure.
And ADA does recognize, too, in those pinch points, of having room to kind of maneuver through.
Okay.
So, and you'll see the diagram, it's on page five of the staff report, I think is an excellent visual of just identifying kind of what that forty-eight inch minimum or four-foot minimum looks like compared to that sixty-inch minimum, which is five feet.
So, the ADA prescribes a sixty-inch turning radius for a wheelchair. So, it, to do that turning movement, they'd have to do it on either side of the lamp post, not...
That is five feet, so that is kind of, that's sort of a minimum that we cannot go beyond at any point.
Well, I should say that the language that's in the staff report is, when we talk about ADA, you've got ADA in public accommodations in buildings, and then you have ADA language as relates to sidewalks and pedestrian ways. And it, it's more, it's less restrictive on the pedestrian ways than in buildings. So, there, if you look at that language in the staff report, it does seem to contemplate pinch points.
Well, if you think about it, we're talking about a totally new-built environment, but if you've gone to other communities that are older, you know, you'll have a lot of variation in sidewalk width. And so, ADA is essentially looking at those minimum widths, but also different ways to accommodate. So, sometimes, you may have to go a different way to get there. I mean, staff's perspective is, we have a fairly new-built environment, dropping below the five and four minimums shouldn't really be necessary. More historic, older sidewalks, maybe, but in this case, these are four, or the five-foot and four-foot is very reasonable.
And that four-point-three is twelve inches?
So, forty-three inches, or forty-eight inches is four feet. And so, that's, that is enough space for a wheelchair to roll through.
I'm just asking, how long is it?
How wide the post?
Oh. I can't remember the post right off the top of my head.
Eighteen inches is the most, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm working from memory, but when you factor in the base, maybe a foot, eighteen inches.
And I presume that the four-feet, three inches is measured from the edge of the base to the nearest point of the fence. It's not measured from the post, not including the base. That's part of the issue we've had is, is looking at the, you know, you see a drawing of a post, and it shows the post, but it doesn't necessarily show the two-foot base that's underneath it, or whatever, so.
If you look at the drawing, it shows it to the base.
Yeah.
And it is.
Yes, it does. Thank you.
Not having personally measured it, I'm going to...
I have.
Remain silent on that answer. I, without having been out there myself, I don't know.
Yeah.
Can you measure that?
Well, the drawing shows it, including the base, so.
Okay, I have some questions. Any others or comments?
First of all, thank you for measuring. I really appreciate it. And I will try to keep my questions and my comments more process-focused, but I do first want to start by acknowledging that Commissioner France initially raised this concern when we were looking at Starbucks. I raised the concern when we were looking at Yaya's, and both times, we were flat-out told, no problem exists. This is, it's fine the way it is. So, I guess my question to staff is, how did we identify this as a process problem?
I've specifically had that conversation with multiple staff. How did, how did we get here? And the answers to the questions that were raised were based on staff's review of the plans, and those reviews were in error. And in part, the staff went out, and my understanding is staff went out in the field and looked at those locations, but the lights were not installed, so...
Or the, did we install, the lights were installed, like, in what, two thousand twelve, two thousand thirteen?
No, they, as part of the street project, they were removed, and so they've been...
But did they go back in new locations, or did they go back in the same locations?
A little bit of both, is my understanding. And so, my understanding is, at the time that staff was looking at these locations in the field, the lights were not physically installed in those locations. So, that's not an excuse, but it contrib...
Right, because obviously, as Ms. Driscoll did indicate, the light locations had to have been indicated somewhere in our streetscape plan.
Right, so that was one contributing factor. The other contributing factor was an oversight on the part of staff and failing to integrate other plans that, and kind of interpolate where the light poles were going to go. I mean, being brutally honest, I think we flat-out overlooked the fact that the light poles were going to be installed, and they were going to be a factor. So, when each one of those questions was raised, one had to do with the flower bed, and it was a dimension, a misread of the dimensions on those plans. The other had to do with streetlights, and it was a complete oversight of failing to apply, to account for the streetlights. So, when asked, staff incorrectly had reached the conclusion it was not a problem, and they communicated that to you. It wasn't as if they knew we had a problem and chose to give you bad information. Their review process broke down.
And to follow up on Commissioner Hodges' question, I made a note here when it talked about the application and the plans were submitted to the DRB board and to us, and I didn't go back and pull my information, but we would have seen this, well, actually on this, it would have shown seven foot, four inches from the curb to where the fence is. But on those drawings that we, were submitted to DR, the design review board, and to us, there were no light poles showing. Is that correct?
No, in fact, you can see on all of them, but Martinelli's, there, none of them have their light posts. Like, you can see the drawings and the, and the renderings for Yaya's, for Starbucks, the light posts aren't there.
And I, and a couple of points, if I may.
And just one, one second. So, is anybody required to sign off on these plans, either on behalf of the applicant or on behalf of staff, in terms of submitting like a signed stamped design that says what we're submitting to DRB, what we're submitting to the city commission? I guarantee this professionally.
I have to go to see if we are required to have an engineer and architect sign those plans. I don't think we do. Some of them did have architects and engineers sign their plans, others had assistants, you know, drawing out their site plan. So, the answer is probably some of those, if you wanted to take that action. That, that is a discussion. There are some of them that were done by architects and engineers, but it is not a requirement for handing in a site plan that goes with this. But an applicant, anytime they hand something in an application, when they sign off the application, they're saying, I'm providing you true and real information. So, if you know something is supposed to be there, then you should provide it.
And if I could...
I'm sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt your thought.
They kind of complement each other, I think. I mean, I, we have no intention of blaming the applicant in any of this, because even if we say it's their responsibility, the first thing they're going to do is turn to city staff and say, what can you tell me about what the future built environment's going to be that I need to factor into my plans? And if we fail to pick up the streetlights, they're going to replicate our oversight. So, and so that's one. The other, while it's not necessarily a guarantee, what Ms. Driscoll's proposed is rather than more of an informal conversation between different divisions, if I have these plans, please take a look at them, let me know if you have any issues, we're formalizing that so that there's a clearer expectation of the review standard, there's a clearer line of accountability by the reviewer, rather than kind of a passing conversation. And then, shoot, I had a third point.
Well, I think to piggyback off of what Mike's saying, one of the things that I'm starting, we're starting to go this way, is that our comments are not only your written comments, but approve, deny, or approve with conditions, so that you're getting the whole kind of range of staff of like, what is, what is it you want? Not just it could or couldn't, because I get a lot of kind of, kind of bigger comments, and, and sometimes, it's left to interpreting what all that means. I think one of the things that we're learning with getting everybody on the road through digital permitting is not only providing comments, but what, what do you want to happen with those comments? And so, it's my hope as we kind of move through this is, it's very easy to pull, did you approve these, did you not approve these, did you approve with conditions? Okay, yes, no? Let's move on to the next step in the process.
And I remembered my third point. You may recall that with the Martinelli's license agreement, which is the most recent one, staff reported that there was a last-minute adjustment made in the configuration of that fencing, because staff caught, and I think it's through the DRB process, but it was, it was into the process, but it was caught that we had a streetlight, we need to revisit the dimensions. I wish we would have caught all of them, but that was the first instance where we picked up on the intended location of the streetlight and factored it in.
Well, and that's one of the reasons...
Thirty percent. I guess it's better than zero. And then, okay, so, I've still not been convinced that the problem is with the process. Where did CPI come in, weigh in with this initiative? Because typically, if I understand our process correctly, typically, we work to reduce steps and try to remove obstacles from applicants. So, has CPI taken a look at how our process broke down and what we're doing to change the process?
Right.
And go from six steps to eleven?
We certainly could do that going forward, but we have not applied, we've not put together a CPI review team, and we've not conducted that.
Okay, because here, I mean, because here's the deal. And I'm not in any way blaming the applicants on this, absolutely not. This was, this was ours to catch, it was, it definitely was ours. So, I guess, my question is, because we haven't been able to execute a six-step process, we're now going to go to an eleven-step process, and how much of that burden is going to be borne by the applicant, him or herself, in terms of how many additional meetings are going to need to be scheduled, you know? How much of this does the applicant have to be involved with, and how much are these additional steps just reflective of internal processes?
Well, if you go through the four additions, the site visit would not have to involve the applicant. That would be a staff task as part of the review. So, I don't know that it would change the review timeline, it would just add the responsibility to the staff. The notice and request for comments sent to reviewers and the applicant, that is in keeping with what we do with our other processes today. And now, that admittedly, well, Lauren, you may be able to speak to whether there's any written communication in the current process, or whether this would create a new round of communication.
No, I mean, that, the notice and request for comments is an internal thing that's done between DRB and the city commission. If there was something woefully wrong, we would get with the applicant and say, look, what's being proposed will have significant changes, but there's a very rare chance of that happening. It's really just an internal piece to make sure what the DRB's recommendations jive what we already know based on that site visit and the site plan should work in reality, so that what goes in front of the city commission has been ground-truthed, it's correct, and everybody's on the same page, so we're not catching it last minute, kind of Martinelli style.
And had we caught it in these other instances, we would have had to have some round of communication with the applicant that we have a problem, that we need to collectively solve. The notice to proceed is paperwork on our end, it's, it would...
It's auto-generated.
It would be a step that, the expectation would be the applicant wouldn't get ahead of us, so they would be waiting on our notice to proceed. And then, the final inspection is, you know, an added step for staff, as well as the certificate of completion, and again, that the applicant would be waiting on us. We would need to be responsive like other inspections when it's called for, as Ms. Driscoll indicated. You know, it, whether it's sidewalk dining, or whether it's other projects, the typical response is they install it and just move on. They don't think to ask us to come and confirm they installed it correctly. So, yeah, it's an added step, but we're going to have to check, we would have an obligation to check it either way.
Would I be right to presume that the new addition of the site visit, number three, would that have caught all of these?
Well, it, hopefully, it would, but for the fact that the poles were not on the ground when we went and did the site visits.
You know, if I might weigh in on this process, I'm looking at the process, and it strikes me, you know, one of the things that's added is a site visit, which I'm a little surprised we didn't do. And the other thing I see added is a final inspection, but normally, if we'd have a DRB meeting, and the DRB would say, no, this has to change, you're going to contact the applicant and talk to them anyway, you're not going to recommend it to the city commission until that's changed. So, it strikes me that we already do that notice, even though it's not formalized in the list of things we do. So, I'm not sure that's a real addition to the process.
I think Commissioner France, I'm sorry...
And the same thing with the certificate of completion and a notice to proceed. You know, the applicant's not going to proceed until somebody tells them, yes, the city commission approved this, unless, of course, they were watching the meeting or sitting here, and they might take it on themselves to start.
Which they have.
So, you know, I'm not sure how much the process has really changed, except for those two onsite visits inspections.
You don't require a walkthrough or an onsite visit of any type at any point in the process?
It is not required. We have tried to encourage it. I, I think one of the things with process in something like this is applicants do not like it when they do not know upfront what these things are going to be. And so, catching them at the end and saying, hey, call us when you're ready for a site inspection, they're like, what? So, by putting it into a Lama and being able to schedule these things, we, so we auto-generate based on information that's in there. We auto-generate a notice to proceed. So, as soon as you guys act on a Monday, Tuesday morning, we click the button, and it will email out a copy of that certificate to proceed. That's not any faster than if they had been here that night. So, notice to proceed goes out, and then, currently, the way we say, we do this, is we say, hey, call us when you're ready for an inspection. By putting in the Lama and giving it a timeline, I can check back. If we haven't heard from them in two weeks, like, we need to be calling. Are you, are you guys ready for a final inspection? Are you, are you guys ready for a final inspection? We can even set that at one week if they haven't called us. So that kind of closes that loop to make sure that we're not kind of a few months down the road then inspecting something when it's a lot harder to correct. And then that certificate of completion is also auto-issued. So as soon as that final site inspection goes, well, in fact, the guys usually do it in the field, approved, and it will email out that certificate of completion right there.
So, so based on the, the way we did these currently, it comes to the city commission, we approved it, and we approved it again based on the site plan we had, which didn't show the light poles. And then the license agreement was signed. So there was really no final inspection.
It's signed, and then we request a final inspection when we gave them a notice to proceed. But without having a mechanism to finally inspect, it, it gets dropped.
So I guess my, and again, my question is, because I know at one point probably the planning department's involved. And then I'm guessing when we look at the final inspection and that, is that still planning or is that like engineering? Or is it the same?
I think either could go and inspect. I mean, I had in my initial, in my initial stuff, I had noted both go out and inspect. I figured we'd get through a couple, and if it's like, nope, it's good having this one or that one do it, then we could, we could tweak that. But I've, I've got somebody from, or both from those departments go out to do that final inspection. One of the things we find with inspections, particularly in something like this, and that's why we do DRT, is you try to, you try to think of how the other departments think, but sometimes you're just never going to catch stuff that other department is considering. And I do think engineering being part of that is pretty important because they are the guardians of the right of way. It's, it's their thing. But we often handle the design guidelines and the other things with the land use around that. So working in tandem together, particularly on when you put a permanent structure in the right of way is a pretty, pretty big deal.
My, I guess, and just looking at this and then, you know, look at my business when we look at kind of a flow chart, it, it appears that somewhere we dropped the fact that somebody should have looked at the license agreement. Am I, towards the end, am I, am I wrong? Because if engineering goes out there, they may look at it and all they're concerned about is knowing ADA is four foot and without knowing that there's a license agreement that said there needs to be six or five. Did we drop that? I guess that, that's a process that I'm looking for is, is there somewhere where everybody knows there's a license agreement and these are the requirements under the license agreement?
So when we do final notice to proceed, and then you schedule that final inspection, in the documents available in LAMA as part of, of being able to sign off, the license agreement is attached.
It is attached, okay.
I mean, I could, I mean, I could take that one step further. And in the notice that goes to staff for scheduling the final inspection, you know, we can highlight on that page of the license agreement, because it's always in a standard section in the license agreement where those standards are, we could, we could highlight, please make sure you're, you're reviewing for compliance with X, Y, and Z or something like that. But that license agreement is available when they're doing inspection.
And just to follow up on that, and this may not be where you were going with, with it, Mayor, but I had jotted down, to me, it would seem extremely helpful to be able to have a downtown built environment template that architects and designers could access where you could actually mark where you, because we already know where pinch points are going to be. I mean, the planners are in place, the, the sculpture tour bases are in place. And, and let people know that if they choose to encroach upon a yellow zone or a red zone or whatever, that their plans are going to require an additional level of scrutiny. And making sure that we've got all of our infrastructure mapped correctly. Because you're right, I mean, I looked, I went back and looked at all of these plans. And it doesn't matter if it was a local architectural firm or I would presume a national one. None of the, none of our infrastructure was noted on here. I think on some of them, the planners weren't even noted. So I guess my question is, in order to help facilitate and make sure that the applicant's designer, engineer, architect, whatever, has what they need to work with, is there any way that we can provide a template? And if they're interested in doing something at, you know, 112 South Santa Fe, well, here's that block, here's what you've got to work with. I'm just, I just.
I think we certainly could give them an inventory of those. The difficulty would be when we're getting down to inches, we need to survey all that to, if we're going to say that, you know, you're, you're below five feet, you're below, we could certainly call it out so that they know that they're going to have to figure out those dimensions. But if we were going to provide them those dimensions, we don't have that level of accuracy from either our as-built plans or our aerial mapping, I don't think.
Wow.
Well, and I, and I don't, and again, I don't know, you know, when, when we go to do some of these projects, how much detail staff is given, like the, the current resolution 7111 talks about Lee District sidewalks will be six foot. Well, I'm guessing Assurance, Assurance Partners and the Field House are in that. Those sidewalks are all five foot. Ash Street between the, the light poles and that, that curb where that, where the, where the parking is to the north, those are five foot. So we have a lot of places where we've gone to five foot, and I, and I think that's sufficient. But at some point, it's not just the license agreement, but there's some point where we didn't have this knowledge of the six foot perhaps. And that, that all those, I guess according to what we're saying, should have come back to commission for approval.
Well, and I think even having the six feet in there from 2014 probably wasn't the right number. I mean.
Even if it's not the right number, it still wasn't, it still wasn't followed. And I don't know. And I, and I guess my whole deal is we need to, you know, we need to get better and we need to figure out where, where our, where we've missed the ball.
What was the six feet in place before the 2014? Because the Field House and Assurance Partners went in before 2014.
Did they?
So.
No, no.
Did they?
Maybe a.
Well, Field House is in process in 2014 anyway. That's, you're correct.
I do think, at a minimum, the location on Ash Street from the city county building to the alley, it doesn't have the dimensions. And I think Resolution 147111 was written in broad strokes. It wasn't, I don't know that it was vetted that if we say six foot is the number, let's go out and find all the busts that that standard's going to create. It was just, and I, and I think the intention probably was that caveat language that the city manager can promulgate additional regulations, but it was just written very broadly without the level of detail that we're now up against.
And probably a presumption there would be grandfathered items.
Well, Mayor Topic and Commissioner Hodges, I think to kind of answer the two things that you're both bringing up is things that I completely agree with. I think maybe one of the problems here is you've got a resolution, then an ordinance, and they're quite jumbled in there of, if you were to ask somebody, hey, where do you go to for this information? I don't know if it's the most clear way to find that information. And whether you're an applicant or you're staff, it's really not helpful to, to not have a clear path for decision-making like that. So that's where things like the Arts and Artainment District really bundles all things downtown into one spot. So even if, you know, you're a fairly new guy or girl on the block as staff, you're going to find it a lot easier if you're doing a code search of kind of where would those resources be? The same thing for an applicant, where should you be looking? So that's, I, I agree, we need to make it easier to not drop the ball there.
It's not just the applicant, it's staff to look too.
Yeah, yeah.
Because, and I, and I like, and I think maybe what you're, the document you're talking about is a little bit what Commissioner Hodges is talking about. There's a, there's a place I can go, and this is, this is what has to happen downtown. And again, granted, we had a lot of moving parts when we were doing downtown. And I, and, you know, ninety some percent of it went well, and we have a, we have some issues. But the whole key is, you know, we still have some things that may happen in, in this area that we need to have a template where people can go and know what, where we, where we need to be.
So the secondary piece to that, and I think we talked a little bit about it in some of those study sessions about downtown, is I've set some budget aside for developing like implementation tools. Because some of us read code all day, but that's not everybody's thing. And so you usually need like complimentary documents in order for people to kind of understand all this. And it's really critical in downtowns. An example, I know you like examples, Commissioner Hodges, Moline's Sidewalk Dining, like it's like their booklet or manual is an excellent example. It's one of the ones that we've kind of got tucked away when we start looking and doing an RFP for consultants to say, I want one of these. And you'd love it. It's step by step. So you're going to do sidewalk dining. This is our definition. These are all of our coordinating codes that belong to that. Here's where you can reference them. And then starts to break them down. What does materials look like? It gives examples of the materials. It gives example site plans of where that's been successful. And really like helps to walk the applicant through how they can be successful in applying so that a lot of those little things get caught rather than the process getting weighed down because you're going, hey, you can't have that material, you can't do that. They kind of self-educate quite well before they apply. Not everybody does, but it's very helpful in having successful applications in something like this.
Don't, we don't, we don't have any kind of a booklet, pamphlet, anything like that. Because I'm, I'm just remembering years ago when I was with Salina Downtown, we had something that we could hand out to people. So, so you're thinking about putting in, you know, a bike rack or a pot or whatever.
We do have.
I mean, that you can say, okay, so if you're going to do outdoor dining, we have this bare minimum expectation that you're going to be using commercial grade furniture. And it's not just a matter of going out and buying stacking plastic chairs and, and putting them out on the sidewalk. So, I mean, so that, that is in existence somewhere, but it obviously isn't.
It's not for sidewalk dining. We have it for the temporary furniture and bikes, but we don't have it for sidewalk dining, which is distinctly more complicated. But all of those things you were talking about, we work with SDI, they're on a complete downtown page where every one of the ordinances, the applications and the coordinating materials. But many of those materials could definitely use some, some TLC.
And I think what you may be thinking of is the design guidelines for the historic district that, that the DRB administers, and it gets into facade materials and, and site layout. That, that's the one that probably would exist at that point.
I think it may be for the more movable elements.
It's the temporary ones, yep.
That's more recent.
And I guess another, you know, thing I'd like to consider, I'd like to ask about, as it's written now, and I don't have any particular support of Resolution 14-7111, we have the authority to grant a variance, to make an exception. And rather than wholesale, you know, adopting a new ordinance, can, could we put that effort into getting the downtown ordinance ready to go? Because if it's going to be a one-stop place, that's going to make everybody's lives a lot easier, I don't even know why we would take, take this step instead of going back and if we need to retroactively approve Blue Sky, Ya-Yas, Martinelli's.
Our conversation started there, and that's where I thought we were headed. But as we looked at the standards and we looked at the dimensions in the downtown, staff's recommendation was that six feet was overly ambitious and five foot's the more appropriate number. And so we're not looking at a lot, a lot more ordinance work beyond changing that six foot to five foot, and then the rest will come out of the downtown ordinance work.
Will this resolution go away once we have the downtown? So.
And so will 18s.
Right.
So right now, this is, this is, this resolution's repealing and restating, basically saying this one's, you know, and all we're doing is changing six to five, which I'm okay with. But then when we get the downtown, the new, this, it'll be repealing both of these.
Yes, it will repeal these. And when we go to do that legislation, you'll see everything that we repeal and what we're replacing. And, and I would love to be, I would love to say, you know what? Let's just do this, and in a couple of months, I've got downtown, we can do that. But as primary drafter on that, I have seven positions vacant right now, including two managerial positions. So I am like on triple duty, and I know I can't give it what it needs in order to give us over the finish line. So if I can just get us through the first of the year and fill some of those positions so that I can be drafting, that would be the ideal. So when we kind of looked at strategies of, of how to kind of write this, this made the most sense. But of course, we're, we are, we, we can move in many different directions.
Just in terms of when we get to the end of the process, when you do have the final site inspection, what indicates that we will have any greater appetite for enforcing our guidelines with a site visit that occurs a week after it's finished rather than one that occurs three months after it's finished?
So an annual renewal is required for these? And so annual renewal time will do an inspection?
So do we anticipate, I mean, you mentioned that there were several, now I don't know if it's several, but it was at least one sidewalk dining business that fit, that used materials that were substantially different from what they proposed. So I guess my question is, again, do we have the appetite to say, I'm sorry, you deviated too, too far on this, your options are redo it or we don't grant your, you know, your occupancy certification or where we don't renew your license agreement? I mean, is there, is there that appetite for that?
But I think we, I mean, there's plenty of other examples where we do that. The breakdown is we have to know what the material was supposed to be to compare it against what's actually in the field. We have to have the dimensions, we have to have the code. And getting this clarified in terms of all that source information and that review and inspection process should catch that discrepancy. And then yes, I think we've, we have a track record of not shying away from that. We have to catch it though.
Well, I think there's a couple of different examples. I mean, there's like one where, oh, we didn't realize we ordered the wrong stuff. Like, because sometimes there's disconnect, you know? Somebody applies, the stuff shows up, the manager installs, and there was not a lot of communication between what was installed and kind of what was ordered. Those we can take care of. A lot of times reordering, new, fixed. But we've had some discussions with folks, and thankfully they resolved due to COVID, of the materials that they had originally intended to order just weren't available anymore. I mean, if that had been a long-term thing, you know, and had said been wrongly installed, maybe at final inspection, we have to look at, if that can't be resolved, then, you know, maybe that needs to come back to the city commission for some kind of variance if they couldn't have been within that five feet or something like a license agreement would allow for.
Would this new process, as you envision it, and I still am advocating quite heavily for Mr. Gardner to get involved in terms of how it shakes out as a process and where he sees room for improvement internally, is there at one point where there's a staff member that is the point person on every single one of these so that he or she knows what they're looking for? I understand that it's, it's important to have the DRB to get Public Works and the Fire Department and, and your staff all on the same page. But I think one of the other things that I'm hearing that concerns me is you've got so many people involved in that, this job doesn't belong to any one person. And I think that something that we might be, that it might be helpful is if I always know that it's going to go to, that Ms. Driscoll's the point person or Mr. Stack or Mr. Andrew or any, any one of the staff people is always, you know, that, or almost always, I know you need to cross-train people, but you've got somebody who's taking ownership of that process. And it's just like, not like, oh, I thought engineering said this, well, I thought the Fire Department said that. And, and I feel like there's an element of too many cooks spoiling the broth or whatever. So I guess I would, I'd like the assurance that, that we're developing a process that's going to eliminate human error as much as we can and that we actually have a human who is the go-to person for that and accepts responsibility for that. Because I mean, ultimately the buck stops with us, but if I'm looking at a plan and it says there's seven feet of clearance, you know, nine times out of 10, I'm going to assume that there's seven feet of clearance.
Well, I'll let Ms. Driscoll answer first, then I'll follow up.
Well, I, I think what we're proposing here is, one, by putting this in LAMA and having kind of these, these gates for action, is you always assign a staff person. It doesn't need to, it's usually a type of person. You assign it to an engineer or you assign it to a planner. It doesn't need to be Mr. Andrew, it could be Mr. Hers.
Right.
So it needs to be assigned to a staff person. And yes, at the end of the day, they are responsible for shepherding that application through the process accurately. But I think, just like many of our applications, those, those checkpoints or those gates where you have multiple cooks in the kitchen has to be, we don't get to mill around in the kitchen, like everybody's there to do a job. You either approve, you, you deny, or you approve with conditions. So. So before you even leave that step, that planner or that engineer who's assigned to that application can look through and go, I've got a couple, a couple denies. Why is that? And you work that through, then that gets resolved there before we move forward. But those other steps, it's clear who's part of that decision-making process.
So, but there's a planner assigned, I would assume, assigned to the current ones, correct? The current downtown?
Yes.
Sidewalk dining ordinances? And so again, this is a personnel issue that I'm not going to go into there, but it would be interesting to me to see if there's a correlation between ones that turn out more successfully than others. And that's why I guess I am, I understand that you can't shunt it all to one planner or the other. I still think it would be nice to try to develop some, I don't know, what do I, what I, I'm not able to think of the word I want, but to develop someone who's familiar with it and some proficiency and who can speak with, you know, knowledge and certainty and who can shepherd the process more from start to finish instead of, I, and I'm glad we have LAMA, but you know, just it hitting a different person every time. I just, it would, I think it would be great if there were, if, if we had a designated staff person who took responsibility.
I understand your point. If it's helpful, we, the process that we have for building permits in general is centralized submission and then they get disseminated. Portions of the plans get disseminated to the fire department utilities and they all then conduct their reviews and they, they enter those into LAMA. And then we have a central person that's responsible for going through all those comments and, and finalizing that application or that response to that application. What's described here in the way of a process is very, is very similar to processes we use in our system elsewhere. DRB's a little bit of a twist, but other things have to go to the planning commission. The significant difference is sidewalk dining had yet to be put in LAMA. It was a one-off that was being done outside of LAMA and that's where the cooks were getting confused. So I'm optimistic that this mirrors our process that has a track record of working and we have every ability to replicate what works in LAMA, get this in LAMA. It's still going to, you know, people are still going to have to do quality reviews of what is their responsibility to review, but the, the miscommunication about what's the question, what's the standard, who's doing the review, when's the review due, those type of things will be resolved. And the communication will be more timely as Ms. Driscoll described in some of that automation as well. So this, this process had yet to be put into LAMA and should have been.
Thank you. That was actually a question I was going to have as I, as I just listening to all the discussion on this, it became reasonably clear to me that we had a process here that was not in, we were not using a tool that was at our disposal to make it work a little bit smoother. And that, that is apparently the case. Are other license agreements and license processes in LAMA, it seems like we ought to use this as an opportunity to make this kind of a general rule because most license agreements would involve some similar processing in terms of, you know, reviewing the application, getting it approved and then checking it after it's done. And it seems like we ought to extend this to use this opportunity to, to apply it generally to license agreements.
License agreements have been a conversation for years in terms of, they, they can vary as you know, if you just recall the license agreements that had come before you, there, there is some standardization to them and then there is some uniqueness. I don't know that we have it in LAMA. It, you know, we prioritize planning and zoning and.
Well, I'm just suggesting we need to use this as a learning experience to try to move forward with that.
Yep.
And we can have things in LAMA, but there's kind of like two levels. You have what we call like an intake mode where even if it's not an external web application yet or has a fully built kind of CPIed process, it does have some basic checkpoints. So at least as the documents come in, they're at least linked to LAMA so they're fully connected to the address and that piece isn't lost. But this definitely needed to be more robust and fully fleshed out in the system.
Any other comments or questions? Any comments from the public? Okay, I'll bring it back to the, oops, where else is somebody coming up?
I'm Ken Ritz. I'm wary of saying anything here, but you mentioned Denver and Lawrence. The plaza comes to mind, it's been years since I've been there, but there's certainly the sidewalk dining and, and lots of traffic, which downtown Salina years ago was amazing. You had to walk on the street. It was, it was the old photographs even when I was a little kid. It was, it was something quite different. But I don't know if, if the plaza has been looked at and measured.
Yes. The plazas can accommodate sidewalk dining. We have a couple of them that will have sidewalk dining, but the setback issues related to right-of-way is a lot different. In fact, they're often public property, not necessarily right-of-way, so they can be treated a little differently versus the sidewalks. So there is room and we do have some in the plazas, but this is primarily related to the sidewalks and having that clear path of travel.
Yeah, I was meaning the plaza in Kansas City.
Oh, oh, that plaza. No, that hasn't, I mean, we've looked at that for like the Greater Arts and Artainment District as good examples for code. And I don't think anybody denies that Lawrence and Denver have great downtown sections. It's just they're built infrastructure versus what we have. There's not different scales, so it's hard to comply.
Because the, the thing that needs to be primary, I think, you see signs in all manufacturing businesses, you know, safety first. There are some real safety issues, two that come to mind. One, if we don't get something done about bicyclists on sidewalks. I know personally two folks who've been injured coming out of downtown buildings and hit by side, by bicyclists because they seem to think it's a, it's a race as, as well as that it's something they should do on sidewalks. And the five-foot sidewalk width depends, there's no comparison between a post and a long wall. The Fieldhouse, I noticed that when it was first completed, there's some other things that aren't very attractive about that whole setup, but that wall is very abrasive material and it's a long wall and, and it crowds. I mean, so aesthetically, it, you know, that, that the comfort factor, there, there's cozy and then there's crowded. And, and, and to me, that, that was a, that was a non-starter and seemingly unnecessary. It looks to me the building, whole building could have been shifted back a foot or two. There's great wide alley space at the back that seems excessive, but I don't know with the railway right-of-ways and there's all kinds of things involved. But when you bring dining out onto the sidewalk, when the sidewalks themselves are risky with the, with the bicyclists, I, I think, you know, there, there's, there's some real issues there. I would say that, that I, I sympathize totally. There was so much going on with that downtown doings and that was so difficult to do. I looked at what the contractors were doing and I thought, my God, how, I'd go crazy.
Yeah, thank you.
You know, just all they have to do. So anyway.
Great, thank you.
Okay, I'll bring it back to the commission.
May I move we approve Resolution 207878? I believe we wanted to take that first, a resolution amending and replacing in full the City of Salina administrative regulations pertaining to both placement signs, outdoor furniture, flare pots, planters, bicycle racks, sidewalk dining in the C4 Business District and repealing Resolution Number 147111.
I'll second that.
We have a motion and a second to approve Resolution Number 20-7878.
Okay, if I could just say one thing. I am going to vote in favor of this. However, I just want my reservations on the record that this is a process issue and that it's not something more than a process issue. So hopefully this will take care of it, but I'm skeptical. So I hope I'm proven wrong.
Hey, whatever, motion and second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? That passes four zero. Okay, that brings us to the next resolution.
May I move we approve Resolution Number 207879, authorizing the mayor to execute an amended and restated sidewalk cafe license agreement with PB and J Restaurants, Inc.
Do we have a second? I will second.
If I can make a comment, I have some real reservations about creating an exception that is this close to the 88 requirement. I would rather see the light pole moved than an exception be granted in this case.
I agree, especially for the low cost of what it would cost to relocate that light pole. And it's also, it's not like we don't have other issues downtown. We have the ponding in certain areas. We, I mean, there's some finish issues with the overhead structures and of course the lighting bollards, which I was going to ask for an update under other business, but I feel like we've still got work to do downtown and I would prefer to see the light pole moved.
Okay, we do have a motion and a second to approve Resolution Number 20-7879. All those in favor? Aye. Opposed?
Nay.
Okay, that does not pass on a two to two vote.
I would move that we authorize movement of the light pole to provide for sufficient five-foot clearance at the location described in front of Yaya's.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to move the light pole in front of Yaya's. Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
Nay. What's our next step?
Leaving this in pass and leaving Yaya's in non-compliance.
Until we have a five?
Yeah, do we want, can we postpone it until next week till we have an odd number?
Returns? Uh, yeah, I guess we could, in terms of placing it on the agenda, is that a reconsideration? Do we need action on their part to place on next week's agenda?
That might be the most helpful way, I'm sure we're on the same page. Would you rather the staff people have a question of agenda timing?
So I need a motion and a second to place this resolution on next week's agenda? Is that what I heard?
Yes, that would be helpful. And just to be clear, we'll, we'll bring this resolution, but once again, you could make a motion to move the light pole rather than, than the resolution and see where Commissioner Davis lands on it.
I move that we address this at the Monday, October 12th city commission meeting and that was for Resolution Number, I'm going to make sure I get the right one, 20-7879.
I'll second that.
We have a motion and a second to bring Resolution 20-7879 to the October 12th city commission meeting. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Yeah, passes four zero. Okay, we'll address that next week. Okay, that brings us to other business.
On the other business, could we get an update on where we stand in terms of some of the punch list for downtown as to whether or not we've let the appropriate contractors know and whether or not that there, it's covered under any kind of a warranty? And I'm thinking specifically of the ponding and as we're moving into winter, those bricks can get exceptionally slick and if we're dealing with ponding plus the slick surface of the bricks, I just, I, I'm concerned about that being something that if we let it go too long, we're not going to be under warranty. And then the same, and then just to follow, so you can do them both at once, the lighting bollards at the intersection, I know that you briefed us as a commission, but I don't know that we've addressed that publicly because I get that question a lot, what's going on with those bollards at the intersections?
And I think I heard you mention overhead structure finish as well and there's some instances of that. So yes, we, we have a punch list and I can, staff can provide you a report next week on what's on the punch list and the status of them.
That'd be great. That'd be great since we're going to take this one item up again anyway.
Okay, and then I have an item under other business in the way of the request of staff. I know that right now we are, are close to having a vacancy in our engagement public information officer program. And I would request that before we proceed with that program, refilling that position, I think we need to have a conversation about where we would like it to go in the future. Well, you know, the, our environment with respect to public information has changed quite a lot since we started that program and we have some ancillary issues, including our website. I think that we may also be addressed in this discussion.
Yeah, I, I'm certainly happy to report on that. I have deliberately not posted the position, recognizing I need to take a hard look at the position description and kind of the, the intent of that position. And a staff report would be a good opportunity to go into a little bit more detail about how we approach our website currently. It's a very, oh, I'm drawing a blank. I don't want to say disjointed, but a very decentralized approach currently that creates challenges for us, so.
And I missed the first part, that we're losing our community engagement coordinator?
Yes.
Oh.
Yes.
It's my understanding that she is, is not coming back after.
Correct, after she has her baby.
Yeah. And I just, I just think it's an opportunity to, to look at how that program might be altered to better meet our current needs.
And I apologize. I thought I reported that.
And I think that plays into our access television issue also is to how that, I mean, I think we still need to address that in this position. I think we need to, to maybe look into that a little bit too.
There's been a number of suggestions, additionally, kind of creating our own news reporting. There's a lot of ideas more than we can put into one full-time position.
It might take more than that and I'm willing to consider that. I think getting information out there is a, is a very important thing and I, it's, we're failing at some levels.
Well, depending on what we do with, with, with access, that, some of that could roll.
Yeah, you're absolutely right. That does play into the discussion.
Does play into that discussion, so. Okay, good points. Thank you, everyone. We do have a request for executive session. How long will we need?
I'm going to say 30 minutes.
All right. See if my math has improved since I moved to the left. I move the city commission recess into executive session for 30 minutes to discuss the subject of legal considerations relating to negotiations with the Saline County Fair Association relating to the potential leasing of the Kenwood Park Arena and arena staging areas with legal counsel based upon the need for consultation with an attorney for the public body, which would be deemed privileged in the attorney-client relationship pursuant to KSA 75-7319B2. The open meeting will resume in this room at.
Seven seventeen.
At seven seventeen.
Could I request seven twenty-two so we might take a break? Somebody has to fill in for Commissioner Davis in this respect.
Seven twenty-two.
Seven twenty-two with a five-minute break. All those in, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? We'll be back in this room at seven twenty-two.
Do we expect action? I should have asked that.
Uh, no.
Okay. Okay, we are back in session and we have no action to take. So with that, I would accept a motion for adjournment.
May I move we adjourn?
Second.
A motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? We will see everyone next week. Thank you.